I'm not sure if it's afternoon or evening, but hello, everybody, and welcome to the March the 7th Camden Planning Board meeting. First, I want to see if there are any public comments on non-agenda items. Seeing none, let's continue. Today, we're having a work session on several proposed zoning ordinance amendments, and I think we're going to let Jeremy Martin, our Planning and Development Director, tell us what these are about.
Thank you. And I want to just remind everyone that there is a schedule here for getting things on to the June ballot, that in order to move, whether it be the marijuana amendments or the formula-based food, any language, final language, would need to be done by me tomorrow afternoon, Monday morning, at the very latest. So this is our last real crack at getting these right. And then we would need to schedule a public hearing for March 21st at the end of this meeting.
Looking at amending the amendments tonight.
Correct. And it, the language needs to be done today.
Okay.
And Jeff, you're, need to push the bush button? Yes, thank you.
Agreed.
And thanks for getting here. I know you were running a little late, so, thanks. And I guess what I can do is I can go down and give a little summary of what these proposed changes are, or what the proposed amendments will do. And I think all of you may have a little, kind of a cheat sheet that details where the proposed amendments are in the zoning ordinance. Cheat sheet says, "Commercial Marijuana Cultivation Facilities in Camden: Summary of Proposed Amendments to the Zoning Ordinance, June 2019." So we've discussed this at many meetings. In order to adopt this, we would have to amend the definition section to include definitions. I have gone through the definitions, and why don't we start there with Article III, Definition Section, if you don't mind. There are two definitions that are included here that can actually be removed from this draft. That would be marijuana concentrate does not need to be in this. That's on page one of 11. Marijuana concentrate, that's going to be deleted out of here.
As per...
We don't need it. What I was trying to put together, I was putting together a big list of all the definitions that would apply to marijuana establishments. That includes the products manufacturing facilities, testing labs, retail stores, and I had this very large list of definitions. Marijuana concentrate only gets and comes into play at, in the, in the products manufacturing and in retail. So since we're not doing any of that, and it does not impact cultivation facilities, we do not need those in there, and I think it's just as, should just get rid of them along with marijuana extraction. If anyone has any questions on these definitions, let me know. These definitions do come from state law, and they all say, "As may be amended, and as the term is defined in state statute." So they are consistent with state law definitions. And remember, tier, we're, in terms of the cultivation facility sizes, we're talking right now about tier one and two. And I think everyone saw my memo, which detailed, kind of my reasoning behind this. And we discussed it at the last Planning Board meeting as well. From there, I think we can move to, why don't we just keep going, rather than looking at the summary of the proposed, just keep going through the page. So I'm on page four of 11 right now, since definitions were one through three. Article V, Administration Enforcement. I think this is something new, you guys did not see, but this is more, it's a housekeeping matter for our office and planning and code, saying, indicating that a permit's required for a commercial, we're just adding some term, some wording here, including indoor and outdoor marijuana cultivation facilities. You just need a use permit, and any permits are needed. That's what that says. And then we would continue on to amend Article VII, Zoning Board of Appeals, Special Exceptions. This is what we've talked about, you've heard this before. These are additional standards in addition to the standard special exception requirements of the Zoning Board of Appeals Special Exception Process. This is just additional standards for marijuana cultivation facilities. This is on page four of 11 again, five A and B.
Can I just quickly ask, so some of these are in purple and some are in black, so...
Purple is the new language?
So the zoning of Board of Appeals, there's nothing changed there from the last...
Yes, there is, and it's not consistent.
It's all new. I'm sorry about that.
The whole document would have been purple. This is sort of where it's going to fit in, among other things, so...
So, yeah, thank you for that, Jeannie clarification. So, and I'll try to explain that as I go through these. This, Article VII, Section Five, Additional Standards for Marijuana Cultivation Facilities, that's all brand new. We don't obviously have that in the zoning ordinance today. And if you plug this back into Article VII, Zoning Board of Appeals, Section Four, piece, Section Four applies to marijuana cultivation facilities, as do, as do these A and B. Any questions from you guys?
Initially, were you speaking about two changes to the definitions?
The definitions from what you have being changed would be the removal of marijuana concentrate from the definition. Marijuana extraction.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Just so everyone knows, we are on, we got to kind of move through these, and I know that there's some public here, and I don't know if the best, if we'd like to maybe take public comment through as we go through each section, if that makes more sense than doing it at the very end. Any thoughts on that, anyone?
We're almost to the end of this, right?
I'd kind of rather have you run through everything.
Super? That sounds good?
Your new amendments are pretty straightforward.
Sounds good?
Fuck down pretty quickly, otherwise, okay.
And obviously, there's renumbering that has to happen in some of this as well, and that's where it says below B there, still under Article VII, Section Four, these new additional standards for cultivation facilities, renumbering six through nine. Amend Article VIII, Resource, these are the actual specific zoning districts. Section One, there is no change proposed in our current zoning ordinance. And I just want to be clear that I think there was some confusion when we put this together, and it says there are no changes, that means there's no changes from the current zoning ordinance, not from what you guys had looked at prior. So Section Two, Article VIII, District Regulation, Section Two, Rural One District, that's RU1, in this, in purple, C, uses permitted as special exceptions. We would allow the following commercial uses, tier one and two, marijuana cultivation facilities on lots of one and a half acres or more, and those are indoor. And then six would be tier one and two, outdoor marijuana cultivation facilities on lots of five acres or more. Numbering changes. Section Three is the Rural Residence, or Rural Recreation District, nothing proposed Section Three, Rural District Two, or this is Section Four, sorry, uses permitted as special exceptions, following commercial uses, and these are a new seven and eight, and then renumbered below. Tier one and two, indoor on one and a half acres or more. Tier one and two, outdoor on five acres or more. Then renumbering. And then Section Five, amend Article VIII, District Regulation, Section Five, Coastal Residential District, CR. And this would be to add, again, new uses permitted as special exceptions. Eleven and twelve, tiers one and two, indoor on an acre and a half or more. Tier one and two, outdoor on lots of five acres or more. There's some consistency through the, these, if you are following closely. Renumbering happens there. And then Section Six, now we're to the Village Extension District, amend Article VIII, Section Six, adding a new eleven and twelve. This is the VE, tier one and two, indoor marijuana cultivation facilities on an acre and a half or more. Tier one and two, outdoor on lots of five acres or more. Section Seven, there are no changes proposed in the Village District, so we're not proposing any marijuana cultivation facilities in the Village District at all. We are not proposing any in the B1. Then we get to B2. We are proposing a new commercial use tier one and two, indoor only, in the B2. These are indoors, special exception again, are, where did my map go? Did I leave it out there? Oh, darn it.
I got it.
The B2s are pretty small lots all the way through, there's...
But there were other indoor ones on the previous examples that still had the stipulation of 1.5 acres.
Yeah, and those are all, if you look at the lot sizes in, in RU1 and RU2, you're at 60,000 square foot lot, which is generally an acre and a half. So that's what I, that's where I went with. I mean, I guess I could have said 10,000 in B2. We didn't talk about that, that didn't come up at our last meetings. And again, we're indoors only, special exception approval.
In the highway business district.
In the highway business, too, B2.
So it could go virtually anywhere.
Yeah, well, B2 is up at Hannaford, and...
Yeah.
Over there.
Thank you, Jeannie.
Thank you, Jeannie. Grocery store.
Stop it. Be good.
Dunkin' Donuts right there.
Okay, should we keep going, Jeremy?
Okay, and then, that is it. No, no outdoors allowed in the B2. Then we get to Section 10, Business Three District. There are no changes proposed, so there are no marijuana cultivation facilities out in the B3, or proposed in the B3. Then we get to Neighborhood Service District. This is B4, proposing to allow a new special exception, a tier one indoor cultivation facility. Again, remember what tier one are, these are the 500 square foot canopies. Section 12...
So why'd we eliminate tier two there, in that district?
Why? I was trying to, I mean, look at...
One thing, if you look at the, when you, I inserted them into the existing ordinance, I sometimes left other uses that are already there as a comparison.
I like that.
It just helps maybe put it in perspective, so the difference.
Yeah, and, I mean, Mark, we can, we can look at that, and we can talk about it. I just thought, again, you know, the B2 is our more intense highway commercial zone, far more intensive uses than in the B4. And the B4, again, it was a 500 square foot grow, and it just, for me, it felt like it was more in line with the proposed, the existing commercial uses that were allowed in that zone, as opposed to a larger tier two grow, which, if you look at these indoor grows, what you need to support a tier two is, you know, again, almost double the space in commercial space in order to support the canopy with seedlings and clones. I'm sorry, I'm away from my mic. That's why I did that. And it's also in, it's B4 smack dab right in the middle of the Village District, where we're not allowing them. I mean, you look at High Mountain Hall, right, here on the map? Surrounded entirely by the B4, where we're not proposing any commercial marijuana grows. B4 over here by, on Washington Street, again, the same, surrounded entirely by the Village District. And I wanted to be cognizant of the Village District.
That makes sense, I was just wondering why.
That's the reasoning. And then River Business District, that River Business District is a little more of an intensive zone than even the, than the B4. So I was allowing, again, a B, the indoor tier two, similar to the B2 zone. I realize that, that the one site that is BR on Washington Street, that's the Tannery site, Town Controls that. Again, it is surrounded by the Village District, except for B4, which is adjacent to it, and those are a more neighborhood zone. But this stretch up on Mount Batty Street, much larger lots than you have in the B4 and in the Village District, so I felt it appropriate to allow a larger tier two canopy in that zone.
And this is another one, I'll start you loud, or it's all...
I'm sorry, I think I said Transitional Business River District. We have the Business River District, and we have Transitional, BTR, I'm not proposing any there. And then you can get to Section 15, amend Article VIII, Section 15, Industrial District. You all know where that is, I believe. It's the red on the zoning map, over down here, Lime Rock Street that way. That's our one industrial zone in town, and I'm proposing tier one and two, indoor cultivation facilities only. That's where cultivation facilities are proposed to be allowed in town, as special exceptions. That is it. The next section in the zoning amendment would be amend Article 10, Performance Standards, Part One, Section One, Shoreland Areas. If you are familiar with the zoning ordinance, there's a whole host of prohibitions, commercial uses that are prohibited in the shoreline zone. What I'm proposing, and we've talked about this prior, is that indoor marijuana cultivation facilities are prohibited in the shoreline zone, indoor. We allow, there's farming allowed, not that cultivation, outdoor cultivation is the same as agriculture, I'm just saying, but it's not as an intensive use as an indoor cultivation facility. So I was proposing to prohibit indoor marijuana cultivation facilities in the shoreline zone. That is all that amendment does. Amend Article 10, Performance Standards, Part Two, Performance Standards Generally. This is kind of, I think, the meat of this ordinance. So these are performance standards specifically for marijuana cultivation facilities. And what you have not seen yet, and was included in the memo and is in this section, is a reference to a marijuana cultivation facility license. I had talked to Town Manager Audra, Kayla Bell, and the Select Board, and most communities that are regulating marijuana facilities, whether they be a cultivation, products manufacturing, or retail, or testing labs, are doing business licensing as well. Business licensing would give a community oversight over them, annual licensing process that you would have, someone would have to go through. We do it for restaurants, we do it for inns, we do it for liquor, we do it for a whole host of things, and it's a good process to, I think, gives, should give people a little more comfort, that the town is taking this seriously, and, you know, police department would do background checks, they would do, we'd do inspections annually, fire code, police would do inspections of the facilities, and it just gives us one more check on a marijuana facility, and it makes perfect sense to me to do that. Most, I have not seen a town yet that is not doing licensing along with permitting and zoning, so...
And say this gets approved, do you have a fee structure, kind of...
Well, we don't have a fee, so how this would play out is if this does get approved, and I've talked to the Select Board about this already, right shortly thereafter, I would draft a business licensing ordinance that would have to get adopted. We would not, it would be not, not my recommendation to wait to take that to November Town Meeting, and I had a conversation with the Select Board about it, and I think they were comfortable with doing a special town meeting, if this got passed. I think then there's, you know, then we know affirmatively the town had, the majority of the town does not have a problem with this, and the best way to do that would be to come in with a, write shortly thereafter with a business licensing ordinance that, again, has, provides oversight, annual fees, annual inspections of the facility.
And so we would review that?
You would, you would not review that, that's, you guys don't do business licensing, that would be, it would fall under a police ordinance right now, how we have our ordinances set up. Question? No? No?
I like it.
So, the way the ordinance is, reads right now, if someone tried to come in, if state, if the state would, if they're, if they got their act together, I think they are moving, seem to be moving pretty rapidly to get their licensing regime in place. One would not be able to open in town until we had our business licensing piece in place, just so you know. And then the next, the next section, again, talks about, you need permits, and then there is that piece on the indemnifying the town of any responsibilities, or any, if violations of any federal or state law. That's just a, we've talked about that before. And then number one here, and this is marijuana cultivation facility as defined in this ordinance shall, I can run through these for the public, only be permitted with approval from the Zoning Boards of Appeals for a special exception, as outlined in, in Article VII, Section Four, we talked about that earlier. Be setback a minimum of 500 feet from a lot containing a childcare facility, a daycare center, or nursery school, a public preschool program, a public school, and the following public facilities, Camden Public Library, Harbor Park, and the Camden Snow Bowl. And then the applicant has to provide that information to the Code Office. And then Subsections One, Two, and Three under here define what a public school is, define what a private school is, define what a public preschool is, define what a childcare facility is, define what a daycare center is. We have some of those definitions in our ordinance, and we don't have some of those definitions in our ordinance. So what this section did was, it applies, it picks up our ordinances that are defined, and then it picks up the state definitions of those. Then the next section, number two there, for the purposes of this section, it defines what the Camden Snow Bowl is, and those are the lots that are where kids generally would be, like the snowball proper. It wouldn't apply to the hinterlands up on the mountain that are beyond the limits of the trails, but it would apply to the ball fields and the boat ramp area, so you have to be 500 feet from that.
Why wasn't private school brought up in paragraph B?
Why?
Right.
That is defined in state statute, and that's in the law, so that's why I was trying to pick that up.
It just says pub, a public school, but it never addresses the private school.
Yeah, it does.
It's after, but it's not, it's not up in this one.
Right, so our ordinance, our ordinance defines public school as public and private schools.
Oh, all right.
So I'm just, that's what the, I mean, trying to, this is like wordsmithing.
And I guess it makes sense.
That's, yes. I'd never, it caught me by surprise when I looked at what public school was in our definition, but, the next one, says, "Once all state and town approvals are issued, the town will not preclude uses listed in A above from opening a location with the applicable setback area." So if, and that's appropriate to state law, too, on this. What that means is if some marijuana cultivation facility goes into a location, and then a daycare comes in and wants to go in down the road, the town can't come back and say, "Okay, cultivation facility, you got to go." They're grandfathered into that location.
Do they say the daycare can't open?
No, they don't say that.
The daycare can still open.
Yes. And that, there's a provision on that in state law, speaks to that, too.
Their own risk.
Yeah. They have to get licensure on their end.
Much like if a bar was open out, outside of the downtown core, because there's a provision on bars setback from churches. So if a bar opens up somewhere, it doesn't apply to downtown cores, downtown centers, but if you were, a bar, say, opened out at the Tannery property, say, and then a church wanted to open up across the street, the church could still open up.
This might kick in, too. It might be against the federal law.
Right, yes, there are federal prohibitions on some of this stuff, too.
They might shut it, the facility down.
Yeah. All right, so in addition, number two is, in addition to subsection one above, outdoor marijuana cultivation facilities shall, and this, this is a section we were talking about last, last week, or two weeks ago, about odor. When we went, decided to go with the, or where I proposed, the five acres, was really trying to address the odor issue. And so what I proposed was that the cultivation facility itself shall be setback on that five, five acres, it shall be setback 300 feet from a property line, and that is intended to mitigate odor issues. The next section talks about state mandated security, talks about six-foot fencing and site proofing sufficient to prevent plants from being seen from abutting properties or public street right-of-way, fenced area must be secured with lock and key. All those things are going to be required under state law. And then there's a provision that comply with best management practices for agricultural operations, documentation shown shall be provided with application for special exception. We did include here a piece on a plan for mitigation of odor sufficient to ensure odor marijuana is not perceptible at any abutting property, perceptible odor may be deemed a public nuisance. And then there's a plan to provide for off-site disposal of solid waste, agricultural waste compliance with applicable state laws, including those specifically applying to marijuana Section Three, in addition to subsection one, indoor marijuana cultivation facility shall, and this is where we address indoor odor. While the town does not mandate any particular equipment specification with regard to filtration, all marijuana cultivation facilities are strongly encouraged to adopt best management practices with regard to implementing state-of-the-art technologies in mitigating marijuana odor, such as air scrubbers and charcoal... such as air scrubbers and charcoal filtration systems. Documentation shall be provided with the application for special exception showing, number one, plans to implement appropriate ventilation and filtration systems sufficient to satisfy the above-mentioned odor standard, perceptible odor may be deemed a public nuisance. And number two, a plan for off-site disposal of solid and cultivation waste in compliance applicable state laws which specifically apply to marijuana establishments. Number four here, this is indoor and outdoor marijuana cultivation facilities. In addition noted above, you're required to provide with the application documentation acknowledging that they will not employ a person under the age of 21, copy of procedure that will be employed to ensure that no person under the age of 20 will be, 21 will be permitted to enter or remain in a marijuana establishment as defined, a copy of an operational plan providing for the proper disposal of marijuana-related byproducts in a safe, sanitary, and secure manner in accordance with applicable federal, state, and local laws. At a minimum, the plan must address how the facility will comply with the following standards. Dumpsters and trash containers must not be overflowing, and the surrounding area must be kept free of litter and trash, all dumpsters and containers shall be screened from public view, trash receptacles on the premises, you discard adult-use marijuana products shall have a metal cover, a lid that is locked at all times when the receptacle is unattended. And then D, a plan to comply with state law regarding pesticide application that requires that all applications of pesticides must be formed by a light person licensed by the state board of pesticide control, copy of applicable state applications and evidence of compliance with any and all state rules and regulations is also required to be submitted. And then a plan to ensure compliance with all state mandated security measures will be in place in operational 24 hours a day. Those are the proposed marijuana changes or amendments for tier one and tier two cultivation facilities in town. I think, and I, in the memo, or the little summary there that Jeannie put together, you put all these together, should provide confidence that the presence of these facilities in Camden will have minimal impact on public health and safety. And I, I do believe that, right? I mean, I think starting, in addition, I think starting, kind of taking baby steps into this is, is an appropriate plan as opposed to allowing the larger tier, up to tier four grows, which can even be larger than the 20,000 that we were talking, 20,000 square-foot canopy that is the state law. They can be larger. If you go back to the state, you can actually get larger than the 20,000. But that's what I'm proposing. I think the work group did a good job putting together their recommendations. In discussions with Jeannie, I think they were ultimately hoping for a broader discussion with the community about what their proposals were. I think they knew that they, I think that's what they were just trying to get this conversation going, and they were proposing, you know, what they thought was, I think they were looking big picture, going, going for it all, knowing that it would come back in some fashion and kind of be brought back in. And this is what that does. Honestly, I think if things go well, and I imagine they will, using these tier one and tier twos, I do envision in the future, you know, looking at tier threes and fours in the future. But I think taking this first step at tier one and twos, indoor and outdoors, is a good way to go. And that's why I'm recommending it. After this happens, again, if this does pass, I, I would look to work with the working group again and the planning board in a more kind of cooperative approach to look at products manufacturing, retail sales potentially. I mean, we have the ability to allow retail sales. We can allow one retail sales establishment in town, we can allow two, we don't have to allow them. But I think it's worth having the conversations as we move forward. I would also like, not part of this at all, no, not at all. And I also want to, the medical caregiver piece, I will be moving forward medical caregiver language to, right now, we have not heard from any caregivers that are looking to open in town retail stores. Just so everyone knows, if a caregiver comes to town and wants to open a retail store, the town has to opt in to allow that. So currently, a new retail store, whether it be adult use or medical caregiver cannot open in town currently and won't under this provision, these ordinance amendments. This is just for cultivation. So if the board has any questions or comments, certainly, we'll talk about it, and I'd love to hear from the public as well on it.
So these final changes that were made were also made because you'd gone through with the town attorney?
Yes, and good point, good point.
That was, some of these changes are legal changes to make it?
Yes. Yes, I did review all of these changes with Bill Kelly, and he gave it the thumbs up, and he was happy with how they, there were some tweaks that I had to make, but outside of that, he said, good job.
Bob Jarman?
Yeah. Good job.
Thank you. Okay.
Just, just point of curiosity, why did everything change from cannabis to marijuana in the definitions? Attorney?
Yeah. The state law is marijuana, is marijuana, is marijuana. And I tried to, I tried my best to make it cannabis. And state law doesn't refer to cannabis. I tried to have a reference to state law where anything in state law that says marijuana, it actually means cannabis, and he was not comfortable with that. So that's why that's like that.
And when you're eliminating, you're eliminating marijuana extraction, you know that that's in the definitions twice?
Yes. Yes. You did. Marijuana, all the definitions are like 10 pages long when you get into it. And the way these would be put into the zoning ordinance, they would not be put in throughout the definitions section, they would be in marijuana. So they would just be specifically in the marijuana piece. Definition of marijuana in all these definitions would be there.
Any more questions or comments from the board?
No.
I like these proposed changes. I think it's a good first step, first kind of try at it, not going for everything and...
And I, you know, honestly, I think I heard that from the majority of the board last time. So I continued with it. I know Member Shaw had some concerns about it. I get where he's coming from. I still think the best approach is to take a step-by-step approach to marijuana in Camden, and let's see how it goes. And if there are no problems, you know, we can, we can look at it further down the road. But I have had, you know, people reach out to me in the community that were concerned about the village zone, and it concerned me too. I've also got, you know, we had a former planning, planning board member that came last, last two weeks ago, he was concerned about the village zone too. I did get an email from Lowry Sargent, former planning board chair on this. I can share it with you. He thinks that this is the, a good, good approach, taking baby steps and doing the tier one and twos now is a good approach. So, I mean, I'm encouraged by some of the support, and I think we did try to listen to concerned townspeople that, you know, the big ones were going to be too big, and the odor was going to be an issue, and the village zone was an issue. So it makes sense to me.
Not that anything could happen, but I noticed one zone, the only zone you don't cover in here is the SP, the State Park. And I think it's, I mean, is it conceivable that it would be permitted in there? That wouldn't be covered? Why? Just because current, pardon me?
It is not one of our zoning districts, State Park.
It says it on there.
Right. It's not listed in our zoning district regulations. I will say municipalities are not allowed to grow or be involved in marijuana establishments, nor is the state. So if at some point the State Park decides to cut off some land, we, they could do that, and we can certainly, we will certainly address that at that point. I don't, yeah, I'm not, I'm not concerned about it, but I appreciate the question.
Spent a lot of work.
Yes.
A lot of work to get to this point.
And the working group spent a lot of time on this too. I mean, they, they started it, so I, you did a lot, yes. Yeah.
Are we ready to hear from the public?
Yeah, I am.
All right. Well, yeah, well, thanks for all the work everybody's done. If anybody has any comments or questions, if they'd like to go over there, and if you wouldn't mind signing in and also just letting us know your name and where you're from. That'd be great.
And just to reiterate, this is like the, the last time we can make changes to this moving forward, because again, for timing purposes in the public hearing, I think people think the public hearing process, they can change an ordinance at that point. That's not what happens in the public hearing process at the public hearing. What, what happens is the board hears what is proposed, and there's a hearing on what is proposed, people make comments on that, and if they convince the board that, you know, it's not a good thing to do, then the board would vote it down, not, not make changes at that time. Hi, Ethan?
I apologize.
No, I get it.
All right, we're just about to start public comments.
Okay, great.
All right, how about it?
Mark Ratner, Camden, I have two questions. Number one, on the first sheet, and I was a few minutes late, so I didn't hear it, the commercial marijuana cultivation facilities in Camden summary. The second one, number three, it says, no marijuana cultivation facility can be established in Camden with approval for a special exception from zoning. Is that a misprint? Is that without approval?
Without approval.
Okay. Curious about that. And number two, something I've been curious about for a while, and I don't know the answer. I know that the state has a 500-foot no allowance within school districts or whatever for medical cultivation facilities, but they recommended 1,000-foot for personal cultivation. And I'm curious, does anybody know why they have the different forms, and why did we choose to go with the medical 500 feet instead of 1,000?
So you're right. The caregivers can grow five, within 500, they cannot, the 500-foot setback from schools, the state law for the adult-use commercial grows is 1,000 feet, but they allow a municipality to adopt a 500-foot setback. And we had talked about, and I believe the working group had talked about this as well, the planning board talked about it. We wanted to be consistent with what the caregivers were allowed to do, especially now realizing that we're at tier one and twos, which is generally the size of a caregiver grow, unless you're one of the big licensed dispensaries like the Wellness Connections of the World that are going to be very large. These are similar in size with what current caregivers would be growing. And I think the board felt that that was appropriate.
The one question I have, I understand, I've heard that before. The one thing I don't know, and I'm curious, is why did the state make the different ruling for 1,000 feet? Does anybody know why the state made that change?
No, I don't. Honestly, Mark, I've tried, I've tried to get information from the state on a lot of these questions, and the state's not helpful. But they did say, you know, you can go to 500 feet, again, with, which is consistent with, and I guess looking at, if we do get down the road of the larger ones, maybe we could look at doing larger ones, like the tier four could potentially be at 1,000 feet. But I don't know why the state did what they did. You know, they come up with a standard and say, but you don't have to meet that standard. Why do that?
Why did they?
I don't know. No one does.
Okay. Anybody else?
I'm Judy McGurk from Camden. First, I want to thank Jeremy and Jeannie, you performed a miracle with this as far as I'm concerned. Fantastic job. I have three questions. I appreciate what you've done with the Village District, but I'm wondering how home occupation fits into this.
Right. So marijuana cultivation facility is a marijuana cultivation facility. So if you were, if you wanted to do a home occupation marijuana cultivation facility, which is possible, you would still have to fall into these zones so that they're allowed in. You can't, one would not be able to say, well, I'm the Village District, and we're allowed to do home occupations. Can I do a home occupation marijuana cultivation? That would not be allowed, if that's the question.
Okay, great, that's a question.
You could do a home occupation cultivation facility, say, if you were in the Village Extension District and had an acre and a half, that's doable.
Okay, thank you. Also, a lot of communities, a lot of states limit the number of facilities. Have you considered limiting the number of special exceptions?
We have not. I have not seen a town, I appreciate it, I have not seen a town in Maine that has limited the number of cultivation facilities yet. I know that there are towns that are limiting the number of retail stores allowed, which I think is probably more appropriate going down that road. But I will say, I'm not envisioning a rush of people coming to Camden to do cultivation facilities, if there is. We do have the ability to amend this ordinance in the future, and we do have the ability to cap them, I will say.
So would it have to go, though, to the public for a vote to amend it?
It would.
Yeah. My only concern is that when I, I've been doing a lot of research, and when you look at what's happening in other states and other communities, they thought they covered all their bases, and now they're running into a lot of trouble. And...
I, I hear that. And I think a lot of the trouble, what I have, and I've been following this for many, many years, when I was up in Bangor, I drafted the regulations up there too. And the outdoor grows appear to be the ones that are causing the problems because of odor issues. And I think pulling the outdoor, the size of the outdoor grows down to tier twos and five acres or more and 300-foot setbacks, I think, it's my hope that that would mitigate odor issues. But again, licensing, we're doing annual licensing on these things. So if it becomes a problem, it's, you know, we identify in the ordinance that it is a nuisance, could be determined a nuisance, and so I think we can deal with that at a licensing level.
Okay. Okay, thanks. And then the last one, on page 10, where you say you strongly encourage to adopt best management practices with regard to the odor, how do you, how do you enforce strongly encourage?
Outdoor grows, you mean? Yeah, I think you're right. Well, through the licensing process, but, and I'm not a grower, but, you know, it may be that, I think most marijuana plants have an odor, some have less odor than others, some are skunkier than others. So maybe they would have to decide to try to find a different strain, maybe.
Well, under number three, on page 10, that says indoor. They're talking, you're talking about indoor there. So that would be filtration, right?
That's the same line as most other towns have them there.
Yeah.
Other towns in Maine are just everywhere.
And most everyone's trying to do it.
Strongly encouraged.
I'm not seeing the strongly encouraged, can you show me? It said three A.
Page 10, number three.
Halfway through, paragraph A.
Paragraph A, right in the middle. The sentence that starts, are strongly encouraged, facilities are strongly encouraged.
Well, and we're also asking for that you need to submit plans to implement appropriate ventilation filtration systems sufficient to satisfy the above-mentioned standard. I think we're, I think we're good. I still don't know what the state's going to. So, you know, I think the state's going to be working, addressing those issues as well. Our standards are on top of the state's standards, so.
But that's probably involved with a license, different lines, so to speak, lead up to a cessation of the business, I would imagine.
I would suspect so.
So licenseee.
You know, one-time hit, you get your opportunity, you're doing like everybody else. I like that.
Yeah, and I mean, I think Mark brings up a good point. And Mark was on the cannabis working group, so I appreciate that he's here. You know, we had a bar downtown that had, this year, that had some odor, some smoke issues. And they came in for their, our restaurant came in for their license. And the select board, as I recall, tabled it or made them, it was a conditional license and they had 90 days, I believe, to try to come up with a solution. They had to extend their staff up and do some things and change how they were firing that wood fire grill. So it is an annual license that we can, we can deal with some of these nuisances that way.
I would point out that it does, you know, it does read from the top. It's shall ensure that the odor is not perceptible at any abutting property. So that's actually, you know, mandate. The best management parts is just how to achieve that. But they can achieve that any way they want, but that's, they're still held to that standard.
Well, most of it sounds really good to me. I was just thinking, how do you, how do you regulate strongly encourage?
Right.
It's an opinion, so.
Right.
Okay, well, that's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Judy.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who would like to speak?
My name is Sheila Dodge. I live here in Camden, my husband and I, and we raised our kids here. All I want to say is I just don't believe that this is something that's, something I want to remember Camden for. We've enjoyed living here for many years and have enjoyed it, excuse me, being a wonderful village to raise our family and have good friends here in our church. I just don't believe this is a benefit to the town. I strongly believe that and I'm just sorry that it's come up at all. I know you've put a lot of work in trying to make it so it's not a bad situation down the road especially, and I appreciate that. I just really believe it's just not for our town and it's not going to be something I would want people to come here and visit and that we'd be known for, especially if it grows and becomes very popular. And that's just my feelings about it. It's just what I, the way I believe it's going to come down one day and that we're just opening up a little box. I call it Pandora's Box and it's just going to not be a good thing down the road. I just wanted you to know that. I respect you and what you're trying to do, but I truly don't believe in it and I'm sorry that it's going down like it is. And I realize we still have to vote on it and everything. I do, I understand, but thank you for letting me say what I wanted to. I appreciate it.
No, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else who'd like to speak?
Tien Paree from Camden on the working group. I'd like to thank Jeannie and Jeremy for their hard work and everybody in the working group and the board to bring this to this point. It's been a lot of work and I think the world has changed. It isn't what it was 30 or 40 or 50 years ago and having this ordinance in place will make Camden a more attractive place for younger people to come to. And older people.
Thanks, Tien.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who'd like to speak? Yeah, sure, come on up, Allison.
Allison McKeller, Camden. I think overall this is pretty good. At first I was frustrated to see the recommendations eroding. It still concerns me a little bit because I think a lot of the fears, you know, I understand looking at people's fears, but I also don't think that we should just give in when it's based on really nothing scientific a lot of the time. But when you look at big, you know, the really big grows, it's these big buildings that don't, it's very unlikely for Camden anyway, the tier three and four, just really based on the size of the building that would be necessary. So I think that's a good compromise because it will give, none of the other towns are really looking at it like that, breaking it up by tier. But I think making it smaller will alleviate some concerns for people without actually having a real impact because I think the chances are so low of something like that really coming to town. I really like that we're creating a space for outdoor growing because environmentally, that's much better. And there's been a move to turn this into a legalization into a major industrial activity that's controlled by huge corporations that have the money to make mega buildings. And I think it's important that Camden, you know, Camden residents voted to legalize marijuana. And so to just say, and, you know, we also like local food and all of these things. And so to say, we want something to be legal, but we don't want to have any, you know, we want to be able to consume it, but we don't want to have any of it being produced locally just would really go against a lot of the other values that Camden holds. And I think a big part of the problem with marijuana in general has been who has been in the position to be able to profit from it for so many years. And now there's this whole new rush of, you know, it used to be the cartel, drug cartels. I lived in Colombia in Mexico and saw the impact of drug cartels and how much money they were able to make based on the sales that they were making here. And so to be able to take that back a little bit, instead of just handing it all over to huge corporations to give small businesses a little bit of a chance to be part of that market and for us to be able to say, okay, well, we voted to have this be legal and then we're also going to preside over how we want the cultivation aspect of it to go. I think it's important and thanks, I do think Jeremy did a great job kind of combining some of these interests. And I think we have a pretty good progressive, but not too progressive proposal to put in front of voters. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Mark Kwiatkowski, Camden resident. I was on the board with the committee and I was one of the persons who was not a big fan of it. I did not think it was a good thing for the town. However, after you look at it and what Allison had said, the voters want marijuana to happen. So I think the approach that you're taking is a good one. Where you take the baby steps and you can actually regulate it to where you want it to be after absorbing whatever the impact is initially going to be. So I just want to say that I think it's a good thing and I think the way you're doing it is fantastic. You're not opening the floodgates, but you're allowing something to happen that the voters wanted to regardless of what our personal opinions are of it. And I just wanted to say that and I thank you guys for your time. Believe me, I know it's crazy. You're not going to please everybody, so I think you're doing it the right way.
Thank you, Mark. Mark, just be ready to come back and help us work on other things. And same to you, Tien.
Do we have any other? I just want to make sure everybody's who wants to speak has had the chance to speak. Is there anybody else who would like to speak? Okay.
Okay.
So at this point, we.
We need to set a public hearing date for March 21st.
At this point, we don't need to have any more discussion. We've heard everybody's comments. So we need somebody to make a motion. Anybody want to make a motion?
I wasn't hearing.
Mr. Legal Guy.
I know, you're so good at that. I just bumble with him each time.
Are you on the board, Ethan?
I will make a motion that we set this for public hearing on March 21st, the cannabis ordinance as drafted and presented at this hearing.
Yes, sorry, Ethan.
Marijuana ordinance be put to a public hearing on March 21st.
I'll second that.
Okay, all those in favor, say aye. Aye, so one, two, three, four, five in favor. Okay, and Mark's an alternate. So five zero unanimous.
Thank you. Thanks a lot for that. Remember, we're on a time schedule, so thanks for moving that right along the way you did.
Everybody who came, appreciate your input.
Thank you, Judy. Next one is formula-based food. This one has been taking a lot of effort, far much more effort than one would ever imagine.
More the marijuana?
Maybe as much as the marijuana because it's so, the marijuana stuff's, it's out there in law and you can implement it in a zoning ordinance, right? This, what we're proposing to do is not a state law that you have to adopt or not adopt. This is something that the town, we can craft an ordinance and we're going to try to do this. So we had looked at this for a couple of months now and there were multiple definitions that were thrown around that had tried to define something. And then if you met three of, at first it was two of a list of five, then we went to three of the list of five criteria or six criteria. And then I think at the last meeting, I got pretty good direction from you. And I have, what I have in front of you is a definition for formula-based food service establishment and a new purpose. I shared this with Bill Kelly, the prior version, Bill Kelly, the town attorney. He had concerns with the draft that you initially had last week or at the end of last week. He had some concerns about the purpose and he had some concerns with the number. I think people are pretty adamant about a number. And so what I did was I used a number of 100, came up with a definition that I think worked very well to describe what a formula-based food, what our intent was. And then I put in the number of 100. And one can Google a list of chain or franchise restaurants and they range from, and I see Josh Moore is in the audience and I looked at it and he actually sent me the big list, that similar list that I put, that I found, he put together into a spreadsheet that includes chains from, the largest one being, I thought it was going to be McDonald's, but it was actually Subway, of 42,421 establishments Subway has. Was that in the United States, Josh? They are crushing McDonald's with, that has 37,241.
I think it's a lower setup cost for Subway.
Oh, yeah, yeah, much lower. I mean, Subway has a unique way of getting, they like their little, small little corner spots in town, so.
But here, Jeremy, you have 20.
Yes, so I'm going to get to that. I have 42,000, I have 20.
It's a lot of Subways.
So that's, but you just mentioned 100.
Yeah, so my initial draft that I, I think I initially sent to you, or maybe it was prior I had going, was 100. And Bill Kelly, I shared it with Bill Kelly, the town attorney. He had concerns, again, with the purpose and with this number of 100. If we're talking about uniqueness and what makes Camden Camden. And his concern was, I talked a lot about local and the purpose before. We still talk about local, but it's in a different context. It's more in context in relation to our comp plan. So when you go down the road of restricting things that are, to things that are local or state-owned, then you, that's a serious issue with the Interstate Commerce Clause of the Constitution. You cannot prohibit a non-Maine company from coming into Maine to do business. That is against Interstate Commerce Clause of the Constitution. So he had concerns with some of the phrasing in the purpose section. So we tweaked the purpose section and he had concerns about the 100, that the 100, if we're talking about unique, I'm just trying to find his memo. He was not convinced that the rationale that Camden offers for the ordinance in the preamble jives with the 100 restaurant size cutoff. Under the ordinance is currently written, a fast food restaurant that is one of 99 could locate downtown, but a restaurant that is one of 101 could not. Litter noise and traffic concerns certainly would remain with chains that have 99 restaurants. And he's not sure that uniqueness and downtown character justification would work to support a chain with 99 restaurants either. Camden may want to consider smaller number that would more closely align with the interests they are promoting while still making way for small chains that are already present, such as Sea Dog and Flatbread, if they're, would like to come to town. So 20 came from, so outside of the number, let's just talk about the definition. Does that appear to work for everyone?
Yeah, if you hold a number on there.
Okay, so let's talk number.
Hold on, I want to go back before. I have a number or a question there. A food service establishment that stands alone or with others?
Other uses.
Yeah, but why is it plural? Other uses, doesn't mean it could be a food, also selling jewelry and soup?
Well, that's the intent there is those, the Dunkin' Donuts that shows up in a gas station in a little corner.
That's how they do that.
This would, either you stand alone or you're with other uses.
Okay, all right, so it's, yeah.
Makes sense.
It discriminates more, not less. I see how you see it, okay.
Anyone else have any issues with the wording other than the number? No? Wording good?
We've beaten this one to death.
Okay, so let's get the, let's look at the number. So the 100 was obviously an issue for Bill and I get it. At the same time, I get it when in terms of uniqueness and all of that. At the same time, when you look at this list of franchises or chains, you know, they go from 42,000, so just so everyone knows, I don't know how many are on this sheet. Probably 30, what's that? Ones you've never heard of, probably. So we have, oh, Howard Johnson's has one.
They're almost gone.
Angor. Oh, that one's gone. Lost forever, it is, it went away.
Do you have any examples of ones that are around 100?
Yes, and that's what we'll talk about really quick. So 100. Dave and Buster's, 122. Cafe Rio, 120. Frish's Big Boy, 120. Bravo Brio, 118. Camille's Sidewalk Cafe, Soup Plantation and Sweet Tomatoes, don't know. 104. 104.
Yeah, these are, you don't want these in Camden.
Dave and Buster's are...
We don't.
You don't want these in Camden.
Soup Plantation, it is, it is.
Where's the In-N-Out Burger?
Hold on, Lido Pizza, Ruth's Chris is at 100. Bu Ya is at 100. Salad Works 100. Uno Pizzeria and Grill, 100.
What's wrong with Ruth Chris? Let's have them.
I wish she was serving right now.
Macaroni Grill is at 100. Papaginos, 98.
So all of those have, just so you know, the logo, they have the uniform, they have the fixed menu. I mean, it's, this is not stuff you want coming into, knocking on your front door. You know, whether you know those names, I mean, these, I'm in California, they're everywhere.
Oliver, yes, yeah.
What are we looking at for around 20 then? I mean, where does Flapbread come? Is that on the list?
Well, that's what I was going to go. So let me just say where 20 came from, really quick. So 20 came from this definition that the state has for chain restaurants, and, but that is not related to zoning at all. It is related to caloric information, the requirement to provide calorie information on food. That's where the only state, only definition in state law that addresses franchises or chains has to do with...
Health.
Health. So that's where, that's why I picked 20.
Do you have any around 50 that you can name off, rattle off, just for the, for...
How many?
All right, so we got, I don't, you know, I've never heard of these, so we'll just go, maybe Mr. Siegel out in LA has... Cotton Patch Cafe, 52. Maggiano's Little Italy, did I say that well? Maggiano's. Two. California Tortilla, 51. Houston's, 51. Max and Irma's, 51. Quaker Steak and Lube, that's 50. I don't know. Yes. Yes, I, they have them in Ohio, so. Roy Rogers, 50. Coco's Bakery, 50. Burgerville, 47. Tilted Kilt and Eatery. Baker Square.
What was before Coco's?
Rod, Roy Rogers. Bubble Gump Shrimp, Black Angus. Jumper. So does, does anybody have a problem with 20?
Yeah.
Having hearing this. 50, I mean, the 50s.
We'd still have to have public comments too.
But what he just described, just Claim Jumper, Coco's, I mean, these are all, but, I mean, the big signs, the uniforms, the fixed menus, the little pictures of the food on the...
Said a lot of these don't, aren't in the East Coast and aren't in New England.
At present.
At present, there.
They've also, a lot of them have gotten down their numbers. They're on their way out. Coco's used to be, I think, probably bigger.
Roy Rogers, too.
Yeah.
I'm surprised Roy Rogers is only at 50.
I mean, Bahama Breeze, I don't know if you know Bahama Breeze? They're a Darden's Restaurant, or at least they were. And Darden's is Olive Garden, you know, they're at 37. But remember, we're not restricting them, banning them in town. We're putting them into a location in town where traffic is more, you know, better suited for them, the location.
We're putting them into one very small area of town, which limits how many can come in drastically, to be honest, right? I mean, that's a reality. I mean, that's what we're doing. We're drawing a fairly small circle around.
It's a zoning district we have in town. So we compromise. Here we go.
Okay.
You guys get the Coco's.
What it makes, I mean, okay.
B2.
There's another B2 also.
Yeah, the archway business.
Yes. Over my neighborhood. Coco's, Roy Rogers. Coco's right up the road.
I mean, one thing, I don't, you know, Camden is, you know, has a, is known for being anti-business, I think. And we're very, we like to regulate and regulate and regulate. And I'm not sure that is the message we want to keep portraying, portraying out there, you know, so. I, I don't know. I, I think 100 is, is probably too high. 20 maybe be too low.
50 sounds, for where we're talking about, in the Hannaford area, the places mentioned with 50.
You have to look at the number, not the location. I think if you pair a number with a word, and the word is unique, it comes back to 20. It's harder to say something of 50 or 100 is unique.
And the language of the purpose as well.
How many Hannafords are there?
It's not a fast food facility.
But I mean, I'm just trying to think like other markets that have things in that area that have multiple establishments. I mean, we have Subway right there.
Would it make sense to get comments from the public at this point, as part of the discussion?
Remember, we got, we got 45 minutes on this. That's what we have available to us. Five.
Anybody got a dartboard?
We do need to be deliberate, we do need to be deliberate on what this number is, and we have to be thoughtful.
Can we have more discussion after we've had the public comments?
Absolutely, yeah.
So would it, I mean, would that make sense to the board just to get, okay, can we do that? Okay, all right, so I guess at this point, we're going to open up the discussion to the public. Please come and let us know who you are.
Allison Keller, Camden. I think this is one of, and this I swore I was not going to get involved in because it's just not really a very interesting topic to me, but when you, the harder you start to look at it, the, and talking to Jenna a lot about this, she was, she was very involved in the Dunkin' Donuts situation before, when they came up with that number of six. And what we found was that when we really started looking at, you know, we all have this idea of chain or franchise in our minds, and it's all very negative, and McDonald's, and then we find out, oh gosh, Flapbread is a chain, but we, that one's so nice, and they do fundraisers for our community, and so, okay, well, just as long as we can let that, you know, that one in, surely there aren't lots others that are like that. But the more you research, you know, franchise, you know, look into organic franchises that are these new startup things that are, people are starting them as, as part of a, you know, a nationwide food movement to try to reduce the carbon footprint of, you know, America's diet. And there are things where there, you know, there are 20 of them in the Los Angeles area. And so if somebody learns about that here and says, you know what, maybe we could have the first one on the East Coast in Camden, and it's a smoothie restaurant that dict, you know, as part of their franchise agreement, it says that you only have to, you can only, and some of them are like this, you have to get all of your greens from local farmers. That's part of the franchise agreement. So there, there's, there appears to be kind of a new wave of franchises that are, you know, they're not in the... They don't, there are not thousands of them. They're, they're small enough now that they're in the, you know, 20s, 30s, 40s that we've all never heard of because they may, you know, there might be a bunch somewhere else. And I just worry about, it's just, you know, the more, the more research you do, the more you realize, oh, that number that seemed kind of big in the grand scheme of things is actually quite small. And I guess if the, I mean, this all started because of a concern about Dunkin' Donuts, which has 8,500 locations. So that's what we pretty much feel good about, knowing that Camden residents are, have a strong opinion about. When you start getting into the, you know, I don't know, has anyone heard of Luke's Lobster? Apparently sort of like a Flap Ready type thing, but with lobster, and it's, people are really divided about what, they have 27 locations. I'd never heard of them, but apparently they're wonderful, and they do great things for the community, and that's still... It's, the numbers, in order to be rec, I think about like things that are recognizable on those highway signs, you know, you see the brand. To get into that level of being able to be targeted by a nationwide advertising campaign, that's really what we want to avoid. Our businesses that are nationally recognizable, and of course, we also probably don't want the tilted kilts of the world or the lube and steak or whatever, but you end up, by saying we don't want... I just think that by being too restrictive, it's, it's going over the top and going beyond what we need to do. And it might not, people might not vote for it when you start, when it starts to be pointed out that, oh, this is the type of thing. You're going to keep out Luke's Lobster? That's, it, it's just people aren't, they're very divided about that. And I think we, if the idea is that there's a concern defending it, if the, you know, what the town attorney says is, I, you know, Camden might want to look at a number less than 100. Okay, to me, that didn't sound like, you absolutely cannot choose 100. I think, fine, we'll choose a little bit less than 100. But if somebody sues us for having a number that is erring on the side of not being too restrictive, then we can say, okay, fine, we'll just, you know, we'll, we'll knock it down to 20, if that's what it's going to be, that's what's going to make it okay. But I, I don't think it's very likely that we're going to be challenged in court because of a difference between 50 and 20. And I would just hope that we don't sabotage the effort by being more restrictive than we need to.
Thank you.
What would you suggest for a number?
I, 100 was my, was the thing that, that's what Santa Monica just did. But 50, you know, 50 I think would be fine. That's what, you know, Jenna and I had talked on the phone, like, okay, let's like just 50 as a compromise, and maybe that'll do it. I don't know. We could talk forever about it.
Is there anybody else who'd like to speak?
Hi, I'm Joshua Moore, living Camden. First of all, thank you guys for taking this issue up. I was involved in the effort 10 years ago, I can't believe it's been 10, since when the Dunkin' Donuts came up. And actually, I think that Jeremy hit upon something in his comment where he said Camden has been seen as anti-business. And I think that came about during the Dunkin' Donuts thing, and I'll tell you, I really tried to fight against that because that entire effort was actually a pro-business effort that came up. We recognized that Dunkin' Donuts going in beside French and Brown was going to hurt the, I hate to use the term, but the brand of Camden. It's made Camden so famous and makes a lot of businesses prosper in town. And that was the entire reason we went at that discussion, was we said, this is a threat to Camden, to the businesses that are, that are here, these, these local mom and pops, et cetera. So I just wanted to make sure that everybody understood that, and, and I was thrilled, honestly. Jeremy sent me the revised purpose, and at first, it looked like a novel, so I got a little frightened. But, but I was pleased to see that someone, Bill Kelly or Jeremy, had put in the word economy or economic like seven times.
Genie.
Genie, way to go. Because that is really, that's the crux of this, you know, is, is how to preserve the economic base that is, that makes Camden special. Yes, it's, it's wonderful to, to, you know, see different signs and different storefronts and all of that. But it's, as I think Deb Dodge, who had to leave, said at an earlier meeting, it's the more corrosive effect of these businesses. You know, you have a business that is making decisions in Omaha or wherever it may be, and they have no local buy-in to what happens in Camden. So that doesn't mean that they need to be owned by someone that lives in Camden, but if they're making decisions on a national level, then, then that is an issue. So I, I think this proposal is fantastic. I did, I shared Allison's concerns with the number of 20 because I also felt that that might be a little overly restrictive, and I, I liked the original version of 100 myself. I think that is a broad, a broad net, I guess you could say, and I actually like that it has some businesses that I have to cringe a little. But you know what? We're not, we're not being overly restrictive. We're saying, listen, we're, we want to protect from the larger threats, national threats that we see here, to the, to not, you know, the coffee shop or whatever it may be, but to the whole entire town. This is something that could affect the entire town if you start to see some of these, you know, larger chains in your, in your downtown area. The only other thing that I wanted to mention that I think is important, and it was removed from this definition, is an earlier draft had the term, causes it to be substantially identical to X number of other outlets. And I think that's an important distinction. I mean, we, we do it to say, you know, mutually identifiable name, but that, that kind of puts it to me in a common definition. I, I know, okay, that one, you know, looks identical. I've said, I think you saw in a note I sent to you, that you can walk into a Sea Dog, I could go to the one in Topsome. And then I go to the one in Camden, and it does not seem, I would not say that those are formula restaurants. I would say that those are franchises, yes, and, you know, these, these businesses that Allison cited, I think are, would be great businesses from what I've heard. I don't think they would all be required to be, you know, substantially identical to each other. They might be, I don't know enough about them, but that would be my only addition.
So just to be clear, are you saying you'd rather have the phrase substantially identical in here?
If, if possible, and I was going to ask Jeremy, I noticed that that did get removed, and I didn't know if maybe Bill or someone had a reason for it.
And we could add it to the very end.
Shared by 20 or more other restaurants regardless of ownership or location, which causes them to be substantially identical.
Wouldn't you have to put it a couple of lines above when you're talking about the other stuff like trademark, logo, service mark? Just add it to that line.
Could we add that instead of using a number?
I, I think that the number is actually important. I'm sorry.
I think the number's important, too.
The issue maybe that I could see with the, the identical language is you could make some minor tweak, and then you're not identical. I think what you're, when you're looking at things like mutually identifying and shared by X number, those things are sort of more broad, where you can't just say, oh, we changed the, we have a different menu board, and so we're not identical to the Hardee's down the road. Something like that. It's, I mean, I think that maybe, I don't know if Bill struck the language or not, but it's one thing I would think would be possibly a concern.
Yeah, you might be right. I mean, the old show don't tell thing.
I think we're getting, I mean, I think the definition that we have, frankly, you got a prescribed formula menu, and you use a trademark, logo, service mark, or mutually identifying name or symbol, that's every one of those.
I agree, yeah. I, I think you've got it, yeah. I understand why the language is appealing because it, it's sort of, it makes sense.
You almost don't have to read the rest, but maybe that's not a good thing.
I will say, you know, a lot of this depends, a lot of, all these restaurants, these big restaurants depend on, you know, what, what their customer base is and the number of cars passing by their establishment, you know. And we, frankly, we don't have the number of people here in Camden. I'm just throwing that out there. Luke's Lobster, I was interested in Luke Lobster, where they are, right? They actually have one in Tennant's Harbor.
That's where they started.
But it's only open through Labor Day weekend, you know. It's just interesting.
Isn't that Linda Bean Jones startup?
No, I think it's two guys down in Tennant's Harbor.
I mean, I think we should have, I mean, the number has been thrown around, and I, I think we need to include a number.
I like 50, just saying.
Would anybody have any issues with 50?
I mean, for, for the zone we're talking, we're talking right around Hannaford. That's what we're saying, right?
Only place you would be able to have them.
It's the only place.
No. We're just talking about the B2.
This is where you are allowed to have a formula-based food business, would be in the B2.
And you'd be able to have more at Fines Center and more than 50.
So you can't put a Dunkin' Donuts in the core town, you can put it up by Hannafords.
If, if we had a number, if we allowed a number of 11,000, right, whenever they are.
So is anyone, it's only in the B2 district that we're proposing having any kind of formula-based business? And we're very much restricting what?
I want to be clear, it's, it's food service right now. We may address that later, but...
B2.
It has to be committed in the B2, if one's allowed. So any place allowed in the B2, it'll only have presence of 50 other.
Or whatever number we think.
Does that make a difference to your thinking?
You thought they were going to be elsewhere in town?
I thought we were restricting, that we were restricting for the whole town, anything that had less, anything that had more than that number.
That isn't, that wasn't the intention. This was saying this is restricting it to be, it's restricted to B2 anyway, and then within B2, these are the restrictions.
So I thought we weren't allowed to ban?
We're not banning them.
We're not.
We're giving them a place to go.
We're not, we're giving them one particular place in town where they can open up.
Nothing that has 1,000 locations can be anywhere in Camden.
Correct.
Correct.
That's what's been proposed.
We have to allow it somewhere, we have to define it, then allow it.
Correct.
You guys are shaking your heads.
Yeah, love to hear your comments.
So what's, what's the?
I think you thought the same, I think we all thought the same.
That this would limiting any place in town.
Also, this is a huge problem with the microphone right now, because nobody can hear us, so this is why.
Can you, can you come and, could you come and speak up here, so that we could get?
Well, can you?
Can you come up and talk at the microphone?
I'll bring the microphone over here.
Okay.
I'm bad, I don't wanna, I don't like doing all the talking. I mean.
We don't need to stop the whole meeting, just because I'm confused, but.
Allison McKeller.
Yeah, okay.
Single half hour.
Half an hour, yeah. But if there are issues, this is a time, this is why we're here, is to discuss this.
We can't change after tonight.
Okay, but we've not decided that we're moving it forward either, right? So I'd much rather.
Because Genie before, when we had, when we had talked, and we were talking about the number of 20, and I was like, oh, well, for example, there's this Luke's Lobster place, and you said, well, why couldn't the Luke's Lobster just go in the B2 area? Like, as if that would solve the problem, we could leave the number at 20, and then a place that had 27 locations would be okay, you said, oh, that, but why wouldn't they just go in the B2?
I don't think that we had 20 then. I think that conversation was when we had.
When we were talking about the hypothetical.
Yeah, I don't think we had.
Well, then it definitely needs to be 100. I mean, so now we're have.
I don't understand, do the select board, or you two members of the select board, think that some franchises, forget the number of, would be allowed, like on Elm Street and downtown Camden? Had you been misled about that?
Currently, currently, all of these things are allowed everywhere.
Right.
Yes.
So we believed that we were restricting a certain group from being present anywhere but the B2. Is that?
Right.
Oh, okay, you thought that you were limiting every district but the B2.
Right, because it was like, oh, they're right up there where they already are, like where Subway already is, so that's where those things would be restricted to.
That's a huge difference from where we've been, yeah.
Okay, you weren't allowed to ban, so how can we ban something from all of town?
We're not banning them, we're putting them into a location.
You have to allow them to be somewhere in your, you don't have to allow them everywhere.
Right.
You have to allow them.
I think Allison's confusion is that you're not allowing, or we're not allowing, say, a McDonald's in B2.
Right, that is my confusion.
And so she's questioning how we're allowed to ban them. I'm just interpreting, I guess.
Yes, that's exactly right.
You're allowed to define a formula-based restaurant.
Yeah.
And locate them in an area of your town. You don't have to allow every single type of franchise or chain restaurant in your town.
And I think that it is not, is it completely clear that we are not allowed to ban certain types of businesses, provided that we have the right purpose in our amendment? That's my, the only challenge that I've ever seen that has been successful against formula businesses was this one in Isla Marada, Florida, and that was determined because they had not spelled out in their purpose specifically what they were trying to do. So it didn't really pass the straight face test. All the other challenges, and there haven't been very many, that I've seen, have actually been upheld. So I don't, I just want to be clear, I'm not a lawyer, and I do not want to be, but I don't, I think you can actually, you know, restrict this type of business, since we don't, we don't want it at all in Camden. And so I don't actually think that's the right approach, and I think that Jeremy's, or Jeremy and Genie's approach of restricting it to this one area is great. I think we're saying, we want to, the core downtown has a particular ambiance and atmosphere, and that's spelled out in the comp plan, et cetera, and I think we want to maintain that. But we also want to recognize, okay, you know, you may have a large, largish business, a large, you know, a formula business that is up to whatever, and I would suggest that it's around 100, and that would be appropriate on the way into, on the way into Camden, on that, in that B2 zone. That's where, I think a Luke's Lobster would be fantastic there. But do I think a Starbucks would be okay there? No, I don't. So I think that's, I think there is a difference.
All right, I think there's a little confusion. There's a fair amount of confusion here, I think.
Can we just let Mark, can we just let Mark say what he wants to say?
I think that the question is, I think that Allison felt, and some of us felt that we were protecting the downtown.
We are.
And by this, then, by only allowing any of these restaurants, what do we allow down, what's allowed downtown? By following this, Sea Dog would no longer be allowed downtown.
No, can I clarify? There's a lot of confusion. So, reading this definition, a food service establishment that stands alone or with other uses that is required by contract or other management arrangement to serve formula menu and to use a trademark, service marker, other mutually identifying name or symbol that is shared by 20 or more other restaurants, regardless of ownership or location, those are allowed in the B2. Right?
More than 20.
More than 20. 20 or more are allowed in the B2.
Right, so what's what I said?
20 or under.
Right, or more. It's not 20 or under. Those that are 20 or under are allowed out there only.
Restaurants are allowed, 19 and under are allowed.
Correct. So if, if, if there's a chain, Flatbread, say, and they have 19.
They can go where restaurants.
They can go, they don't have to be in the B2.
They can be in.
But if Dunk, it is, right, so if Dunkin' Donuts wants to go there, they can go there. Yes. We're not limiting them, we're not limiting them in town, we're limiting them here, Elm Street, B4, BR, wherever restaurants are allowed, under 20 are allowed there. If you want more, if you've got more than 20, or more than 50, or more than, are up there.
So anybody could come and park themselves in B2?
Correct.
Okay, but that's the only place they can park themselves.
That is what I said.
We just had a little confusion.
We had, we did this little circle thing for like two months on these. I think that's part of the dilemma, is that.
I think it was kind of stated, I heard it both ways.
All right.
Yeah, the number, the number is sort of new again, because it wasn't in our last, we asked for it, but it was not in our last, so.
It's 20 or more.
So we're clear now.
It's not limiting.
And I'm thinking based on, you know, we're clear now that, as Jeremy has said, if you have less than 20, you can, you can apply to be down here in town, in the village.
A couple of minutes ago, when I was like, so, so something with 1,000 locations can't go anywhere, and everybody was like, yeah, that's what we're saying.
Yeah.
That was not.
Honestly, Allison, this has been, I think.
Thank you for clarifying, because, yeah, we've gone through.
Okay, so if, okay, so if the number's 20, and say Luke's Lobster has 27 locations, that would go B2, but not the.
Correct.
I feel a little bit like, I like some, but great, that's.
I want to be 100% clear, because I think this is so important, and I will unfortunately cite this example. If this amendment gets, that's the select board and then passed by the voters, you could have a Dunkin' Donuts go in next to Subway.
Yes.
Okay. That's exactly what I understand.
Correct.
And I apologize.
Without a drive-through.
I was editing that circle for a minute there.
Without a drive-through.
Without the, right, right, subject to other things, but, right, no drive-through, et cetera.
And, I mean, we could have a McDonald's.
You could have McDonald's.
Likewise, you couldn't have the California green smoothie restaurant downtown or on Elm Street. It could only go out, huh?
It depends how many locations they have.
Well, we were saying in the one before, they were saying before that they had like 50 out there, and.
Have you heard of Lobster?
Yeah.
There are two of them. I know.
Are we good with the 20?
Are we good with the 20, or what do you think?
I think we are, if we're talking about, you know, I think there was confusion, and I think if we're talking about, anything is allowed outside in the B2, and then for the village itself, I think 20 actually does seem like a fairly decent number, at least to me.
I, I mean, I still appreciate what Allison is saying on the number, I mean, there are those that are unique, and that we may not, you know, dislike downtown and take away our uniqueness that Camden has, if you're at 35, or you're four, they have 40 of them across the country, or they have 30 of them in New England.
I'm not clear what you're saying.
What are you saying?
Where do you draw the line of being unique?
Right.
I mean, we realize that we're pulling an arbitrary number, but I think, I think if we're talking about the village, you know, the village district and Elm Street, I don't see why we want to go, why we need to go higher.
I mean, I think the question we're trying to establish is establishing, is finding a reasonable balance between protecting the unique character of the town, and also allow, giving some leeway for businesses to come in and not being, and not being anti-business in reality. And is it anti-business to be setting a number as low as 20?
I think that's a good point.
That, I think, it seems like that's the crux of what we're looking at here.
Right, but we can also use it in real terms, like, do we want a Luke's Lobster right downtown next to, next to Peter Oats? Or taken over, you know, taken over.
I would, I would think so, yeah.
Yeah, I don't know, I don't know. I'm asking a question, I'm not.
I would think it's unique enough and would fit in with Camden. That's my, my take.
At 27.
At 27. I mean, I think, and then you could go up probably to 50.
If you go to Dave and Buster's in town, it's, you're not, you're not unique anymore, I'll promise you that. Dave and Buster's is, Dave and Buster's is a neon sign.
We don't, I don't believe we allow any.
I know, I know, but I'm just saying, that's, that's the type of, that's the type of, we talked about it last time, like, you know it when you see it, like obscenity?
It's true.
Dave and Buster's is your franchise that you don't want, I mean, in my opinion.
How many are there?
I think you mentioned, I think you said there were 50.
Mark's got.
I think one of the things we need to remember is, the amount of money it takes to build a Dave and Buster's, we're a town of 5,000 people.
Correct.
They would, somebody would have to be absolutely crazy to open a Dave and Buster's in Camden, because they would not survive. You know, we survive on unique, individual restaurants, because they can survive. Franchises cost a ton of money to put together. Dunkin' Donuts is probably one of the few places where you can, you know, it's a, it's a high-traffic area, but it's, you know, we're worrying about things that are never going to happen based on our population size.
I think that's a valid point.
But don't forget, Route 1 goes right by it, and that's not limited to 5,000 people a year.
No, that's, that's true, but I'm talking about, we can keep, you know, we can keep the number of 20, something, if something wants to open in the, in the B2, that's fine, but, you know, there are a few of those other people, because of the parking, because of the space in downtown Camden, none of those places are going to open downtown. Chances are very, very slim.
Do you think this needs to be rewritten, so there's not the confusion that at least two members of the select board are intelligent?
No, I don't, I don't, I don't, we're good. There was, there was just like, there's too much happening, frankly. Yeah, the ordinance is pretty clear to me.
I'd like, I'd like to decide our number.
There are 105 locations of Dave and Buster's.
This is concrete, this is the number.
49.
49.
49.
49.
Do you want me to drink? 49?
I have 75, that's the number, and it's really need to get off the ballot in Camden, and Camden voters recently upheld that. It's a compromise.
And I'm gonna be the 20 guy, so it looks like we might come right into.
Let's kind of just, let's go along and see what the general feel is. Matt, you sound like you'd be more in favor, Matt, you sound like you'd be more in favor of allowing 10.
I know why he's an alternate.
I know it's getting late, gentlemen, can we just like, hold it together for a couple more minutes? Okay, you'd be in favor of 20?
20 guy.
Because?
It's, in terms of character, and in terms of brand of the town, I think you're gonna really get into some hot water. And I'm pro-business, like many people in this room, but I think you're, and due respect, Mark, I think Route 1, at some point, is going to attract a lot of these companies to start nibbling up here. So I would be in the 20 position.
Okay, thank you. Richard?
Well, at first I thought 20, but I, I subscribe quite a bit to what Allison said about 50, so I'd probably compromise and say like, 40, something like that. So I'll go to, I'll go to 40.
Okay. We put bets on this, we've got money going on.
We're gonna make, then we're gonna divide it by the average.
That's gonna work.
What would your take be on it?
I, you know.
Right, I'm 20.
I'm kind of leaning towards 50.
Because?
Because it just seems like a good threshold, as far as the restaurant change that Jeremy was reading off with the 50 number. If it were to, like, present itself as a problem, this would be a minor amendment for us to just go and change the number. So it's, it's one of those things that like, do you want to start lower, or do you want to start like a little higher? And.
Well, I'm not sure you can, if you get an application, a permit application that fits under the ordinance, you can't go back and address that particular, I don't think.
No, but if it presents more.
Right.
Stuff like that before.
Right, but it's, it's borderline.
Yeah, but there's not going to be more than two people getting through the gate. There might be one that gets through the gate, there'd be like 50 to 20 somewhere in there. If that applicant creates a major issue, it's a minor amendment for us to bump the number and really revisit it. So to me, it's more, do we want to be conservative, or do we want to be more open to businesses in this one?
But that's, Becca, it's not about necessarily being conservative, I mean, you're opening the gate, at the head of town right here, to begin this kind of homogenized, okay, if you want a Houston's or a Coco's, I mean, it's gonna come in right there. It's about downtown, and how to maintain, I mean, again, the purpose here is about the character of town. When you raise that bar, and it starts going up to 50, and you get the Houston's coming into town, you have, you're gonna annihilate the character, and, I mean, you're gonna start that whole homogenization of the town. And again, I don't think you're restricting necessarily business, I mean, you're gonna open up the B2, and you're, you know, for better or for worse, people will come, and Mark, I don't know if they're gonna come right away, but I think.
I'm a 20, I'm a 20 person to protect the downtown, you know, I still don't think.
Right, and I'm, so that's where I am as well, Jeff, just so you know. Protecting the downtown, and, you know, B2, have at it, kids. Not my idea.
All right, right. So, but just, if you're saying, protect the downtown, not allow the ones that are 20 or more downtown, but up there, it doesn't matter?
It's not that it doesn't matter.
No, I'm just, I'm just trying to get to the number, because remember, these are the ones that would, we would only allow these up there.
Yeah, that's your, your 20s are up there, too.
That's where your 21, right.
Over 20.
Over 20, over 20, you're up there.
Yeah.
Just clarifying.
It's over 20, I mean, yeah, but then it's, the other side of that is, it's under 20, this is to Allison's point, in town.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, that's a darn good point. You're absolutely right. I'm, I'm kind of leaning towards 50 and then shrink it down if it.
If we need to.
If it's, you know, not ideal and the town gets kind of involved with it. Usually when we make these ordinances, I stay conservative in the beginning, like you're saying, but with this, I mean, I just don't see much of a problem.
And we haven't had any inquiries from anything other than.
Dunkin' Donuts trying to get next to French and Brown, that raises the red flags.
With 11,000.
Sure, I, I gotta.
Do you want to make, go Allison's make sure.
When, when restaurants are cited, they're all like dream restaurants, you know, like what Allison and others have said here tonight, like, you know, Luke's Lobster and stuff like that, like I think you have to pay more attention to the number than one that you might, as you just said, not like or not approve. It could be anybody. You can't qualify it by whether it's a cool place to eat or whether it's green.
Yeah.
It's a number of number. What's your number now?
I just want to go through and make sure.
I'm at 49. I, I lean lower if anything actually, I'm, I'm, you know, my, my concern is this idea that it's easier to actually raise the number than it is to lower it. If, if, if something comes in and we say, oh, you know, here's this project and, oh, well, too bad you have 50, you can't, you can't come in and people in town say, hey, we want something like that in town, well, we can change the number. But if somebody comes in and gets their application and dots all their i's and crosses their t's and we say it's, it's under 50 and we, people in Camden say, no, we don't want it, yeah, there are things you can do, but legally under the code, that, the code enforcement officer has pretty much no choice but to issue that permit if they comply with everything else. You can't just go back and say, oh, we're going to change that number now to 20.
And you think.
So we get one person through.
And you think 49 is a safe number to?
It's under 50.
It's a little higher than I want it to be, but it's, but I'm trying to be, I'm trying to compromise.
Okay.
What would you want it to be?
I lean, I lean closer to 20, but I, but at 49, I think it's a compromise.
I think we're going towards 20.
That's the numbers.
I mean, I'm really interested in everybody's.
I think we're going towards 20.
All right, Mark, what's your take on this?
If you make it, I mean, if that's necessary.
That's true too.
So once the select board gets it, we're not going to be able to change it at that point. So it's either going to be up or down for us, and that's the hard.
That is the hard part here.
That does make it necessary for some like discussion and.
Yeah, and I'd like, I mean, we've, we've got seven minutes and I'd love to see if we could get this wrapped up, because I think we may be getting there, but I want to hear from Mark, because we haven't heard from him yet.
So with the new understanding about where these restaurants can be.
I didn't, I was not confused, it was the.
Yeah.
There was no new understanding, it was.
It was where the conversation went, yeah.
Well, I was confused.
Oh, you were?
Yes.
Okay, so what's, what's your take on this, Mark?
I think according to the purpose of this, 20 would be the number, but I'm also okay with 50.
So.
I think you said 50.
I mean, I'm, I'm okay with 50.
I mean, I'm, I'm, I'm hearing, I'm hearing significant concern from the select board. I don't know if that's, I mean, I don't, I mean, and, and what I'm also hearing is that we're going to pass this along to you and you're either going to be okay with it and move it forward or you're actually not going to be okay with it. Is, am I understanding that correctly?
That's the way it's.
Yeah, of course.
And then, and then if you're not feeling okay with this, then you could basically put the kibosh on this and say it's not okay to move forward.
Correct.
Is that correct?
Rosie, the system, the system is got issues and Allison just mentioned it about when it comes to us, we could, if we don't agree, but there's five people that have to agree, or three are the five people that have to agree, we're not negotiating that here. We could, do not speak to you here as select board members, we speak to you as residents of Camden. We take more, no more weight here, discussion than any person that walks in that door. So that's one. Two, but there have been stated concerns by Mark and others and Allison particularly, who happen to be select board members, but raising legitimate concerns about how restrictive and Jeremy's point about, the very first point about being, fearing, fearing of being anti-business, those issues the planning board does need to consider. I do believe as a Camden resident that my opinion of a great restaurant is not your opinion of a great restaurant. You probably wouldn't, Mark, you probably wouldn't buy the same clothes I buy. There, there are some of the restaurants on that list that I think are absolutely excellent places for this town, but that's my opinion. My opinion is not the opinion of this town. And again, to the fundamental point here, this all started from my perspective with the D-word that we didn't want here, the 14,000 or whatever it is, number.
1,800.
A number of, of, that are out there, then all of a sudden it morphed into this debate about Ruth's Chris versus, you know, Dave and Buster's. Olive Garden and all these other things, you know, and it goes to a broader issue. We're discussing this, these restaurants. We have no restriction on any other business that can come in this town, of which I can give you a list that you do not want here. This is just the tip of the iceberg and that's a consideration you have to remember also because there are certain businesses that could move into the open space next to where the, where the First Bank used to be. We can't stop it. You know, it isn't just about the Dunkin' Donuts thing to happen, I think in 2009, I think that was Josh, which was fended off. That's the backdrop of this whole thing. But to your point, to your issue, yeah, I mean, it's, it's not a negotiation, it's something you have to put your six heads together and decide what you think is the best thing for the town and recommend that to the select board.
I, I might add, you're here to do your job, not ours, not to try and figure out what we're going to do because that's not fair. You're here because we need your expertise to figure it out and then we can make a decision afterwards. Our, what we may or may not do shouldn't enter into your discussion.
I mean, if they vote it down, then we just, we send it back next, next time around. I mean.
That's, that's fair. They vote it down, it comes back around and we can talk about it again.
It doesn't go on the June ballot, that's all.
Yep, goes to November.
Right.
It hasn't been heard by the public, hasn't been a public.
Correct.
Should we just vote on 20 or 50?
Why don't we see what the consensus was here? We're only waiting for Rosie to say a number.
I mean, to be honest with you, I, I think, I don't think in the big picture, whether it's 20 or 50 is going to make any huge amount of difference. That would be my take, I think, really in the big scheme of things, it's relatively minor, so that would be.
So where are you at, 200?
I'd be quite happy to just abstain because I don't, you mean 20? Yeah, I mean, I don't, I don't have any strong feelings either way.
We have 70.
That would be my take. So do we want to?
I would just put out there again, I mean, this is going to be at the front of your town, as people are coming from the south, so it is the gateway. You know, what do you want people to see as they're coming into town?
Well, that's, that's wide open though.
It is part of it.
Two minutes.
Certainly, with two minutes.
Well.
What's, what's.
I just want to make, I, I fear that I might have helped introduce some confusion, so I want to try to clarify that. At this moment, there is no restriction in Camden on these businesses. Dunkin' Donuts can come in next to the, the bank here, next to Josephine, whatever it may be. All you're doing is putting a restriction in place. So you're going from nothing and you're talking about going all the way down to 20. That is a pretty, pretty deep group and I totally agree with you, Rosie, that that may be the difference between 20 and 50 is nothing. However, whether it's the select board or the public, there is a perceptual difference of 20 is extremely restrictive, 50 is pretty darn restrictive, 100 is a little less. So it's, you know, you're tapering down, but as of right now, one, any business can go anywhere it wants in Camden.
Thank you. Richard, Richard averaged out the votes and came up with 41.8, so.
Answer to the ultimate question.
Life, universe and everything.
Let's get 50.
Let's go with 50?
Go with 50.
I think 50 is a decent compromise.
50 is awesome.
Nobody's happy with it, so it means it's a compromise.
Yeah, it'll sound bad.
All right, all right, so.
Okay, thank you gentlemen.
We got to, we got to roll on this.
Okay. So do we need to make a motion?
We need to make a motion to do this and I'm going to change this to 50.
I will move.
Yep.
That we change the number in the definition of formula-based food service establishment from 20 to 50 and send it on to public hearing for March 21st.
At 4 o'clock.
Do I have to say that?
All those in favor?
Perfect.
5-0 unanimous, thank you.
I did.
Thank you, Richard. Budget committee, just like today.
Thank you. That's where everybody's arriving. Thank you very much. Do we need to make a motion to close the meeting?
Close the meeting?
Can we just call it closed second?
Sure.
All right, thank you.
Microphones off.
Okay.
What's that?
Time to turn your microphones on. We're ready to go.
He was all for it.
Good evening. Thank you all for showing up. We have a quorum. We have 21 members is my calculation. We have more than 11 people, so we have a quorum, which is a good start. Tonight, we're going to take a look at a lot of things that have to do with going on in this building, the actual sort of administration thing, codes, the Opera House. Those are the...
Thank you, yes.
You can pay for it.
Is that in the budget?
Oh.
Okay, yeah.
We're saving money. One preliminary question I have is Maria Libby, who's the superintendent now of the school district, has agreed or offered to come down and sort of give us a quick presentation of what the school budget looks like, if we're interested in that. And I thought the night to do that might be the 21st of March, which is a couple weeks from now, but that's a fairly busy night that includes the library, going over debt service, capital reserves, capital improvements, which will take some time. We also can take a look at the snowball in the wastewater treatment plant that night. We don't really have an active role in their budgets, but they've been coming in and presenting to us. The other option would be to have her come on Thursday, the 28th, which is a more open schedule, but that's sort of our wrap-up meeting where we take a look at everything and decide if we're going to make any final tweaks before we vote on a budget recommendation. Anybody have any thoughts on that?
Didn't she not come next week? Or is that...
Well, next week is pretty busy, you know, with the police and fire and attendants and public works. That's a pretty full schedule for us. And the library typically isn't that long a presentation an issue unless something comes up, Mark.
How are they coming on their budget? Will they be done by then?
I don't know that we're expecting them to be done, other than giving us sort of a feel as to where they think they're going. And I think ultimately, we vote on the budget at the June election, right? So it's always kind of up for final approval, as of course is our work, but... Another week would give them more...
I'm thinking the later, the later, the better. Give them a chance to have their budget more prepared.
Yeah.
They are having their public hearing on the 27th of March.
Twenty-seven?
Sorry, public input.
And the other, you know, we don't obviously have any control over the school budget. You know, it's not something that's needed for us to review or hear about it, but just given that it all plays into what our mill rate ends up being, it might be a useful hearing. It means that if we do it on the 28th, which we go later, it means we're going to likely have a longer final meeting.
I remember the final meeting last year being pretty short. I feel like we had extra time.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Everybody seemed real happy about that.
How long would her presentation be?
I don't know.
Yeah, I mean, I would assume that her giving us 10 or 15 minutes of outline, and then we would certainly have 15 minutes of questions, I would think. So I would plan on at least a half an hour for something like that.
I think that's reasonable.
Yeah.
Do it the 28th.
Try it the 28th? Okay. 28th, okay? You'll catch up with her.
Yes.
That would be great. Thank you. Anybody have any preliminary questions, comments? No? Okay. I guess. Are you our first witness?
I'm your first witness. All right. So the first cost center that we'll be talking about is the administration and finance area of the budget. And this is really where my department sits, so the town manager's office, myself and Janice, along with the finance department, and the town clerk, and all those sorts of administrative functions of the town. So really, I'd just like to point out that this year, the sort of more significant changes to, as compared to FY '19, can be attributed to wages and benefits. And a lot of that comes from a proposal to make a position that's currently 25 hours, 30 hours a week, and Jody can talk a little bit more about that, as well as the communicate... There was some difference in the communications line. Traditionally, some of the cost of the phone system had been put in the IT budget, and we wanted to pull that out, just so it reflected the true cost here. We also do have a new phone system. It's a voice-over Internet protocol system in the town office. We were hoping that elections this year could be a little bit lower, but we wanted to plan for a potential state legislative change that had to do with 2020 presidential primaries. And I think that those were the major areas within that budget that could change.
Yep.
What is that legislative change that might happen?
Well, I actually have something from my clerk. I won't read it verbatim, but apparently there is... This is from the MMA Executive Committee that...
Excuse me.
Maybe I didn't bring it with me. Basically, what it was is that there's a bill supposedly going to the legislature for approval of having a presidential primary come back, which would require a lot of staff time.
Okay. Yep, that would certainly add something to it. Okay, thank you.
So, any questions?
I do have a question about the note for 510 on health insurance. Last week, when we were talking about that, I got the impression that there was no employee contribution at all to that, but it seems like there's something about a cost difference depending on what they pick. What is that about?
So, anybody hired post-2007, they pay 20% for dependents, depending on the plan that they get. If they get the lowest-cost health insurance plan, though, the town pays 100% of the cost.
So there's the employees... The employee contribution is only for dependents. All employees who are full-time get 100% coverage?
Yes.
Any questions?
And the $2,000 increase in insurance, is that because of the change in somebody's position?
That's from the position going from 25 hours a week to 30. That kicks it into full-time and eligible for benefits.
Anyone else? Any other... Yes?
There's... Didn't you say last week there's going to be a 3% increase in salaries?
Yes, and that was... That would be reflected in the full-time wages line.
The top line, the...
Yeah.
So, yeah, that does account for some of the difference as well between this proposed financial year and the current financial year we're in.
So the top line is all the same people you have this year, one person going up to full-time, plus the 3%?
Correct. Yeah.
Out of curiosity, what is the wellness program? It doesn't seem like a lot of money, and I'm just wondering what you do.
Yeah, so that's a... We have a wellness committee made up of employees, and they come up with programs to try to get everybody in the organization to participate in, to improve employee health.
Is this just a little seed fund for them to...
Yeah, just to give them, you know, if they want to, I don't know, have classes. There's been some wellness classes and events.
Yep. With the communications units, that went up $7,000 for coming out of the IT budget. So when we get to the IT budget, will we see a decrease in $7,000 there?
There is a decrease in the IT budget. I don't think it's exactly a $7,000, because we went up in a few other areas for a few reasons, but we can talk a bit more about that when we get there. We're kind of in a transition point with our IT, where we're trying to, you know, move away to, you know, we transitioned to Office 365. We're trying to get off physical servers to cloud-based servers, but we're not quite there yet. So we've, you know, we've still got some of the costs that you would have from having those physical servers there, as well as the licensing for the software, so...
So by going to 365, we should see a long-term savings or large savings?
That's the hope.
Because what are you doing, the virtual or the full license?
Maybe a full license.
So you're looking at $10 a headcount?
Yeah. Yep. The idea is, you know, we're eventually going to get all of our data off those servers, but we're not quite there yet for a few reasons. So we're that awkward period where we're changing.
And with telecom, are you guys looking at legacy telecom systems, or are you looking at something like a MOO or a virtualized system that costs a little bit more?
Yeah, we're a voice-over Internet protocol now system, so it's all virtual. So it's, you know, a little bit higher in terms of like the month-to-month licensing or the... Just the fee for the system, but, you know, the physical cost and the cost of maintenance, hopefully, will be lower than what we're paying with an old system.
Anybody else? Can we... Yes?
The line item for mileage, it looks like it's underbudgeted versus actuals. Can you explain that? So the mileage stipend?
We're 1201.
Eighteen, you were $3,003.48, and you're budgeting $500?
Yeah.
This was actually a result of hiring the new town manager back in 2017, and part of her contract was the mileage stipend, as opposed to the prior town manager. So that represents that expense to her.
Okay, thank you.
The credit card fee line. I'm assuming that we do not accept credit cards in our town office, and that's the reason why we have no fees for that?
We are actually... We go through what's called inform to accept credit card payments, and we pass that fee on to the customer. This $200 appropriation, I'm not sure what sparked that back in 2017. It was prior to my arrival, so I'm not... I don't know the reasoning behind it, but there's no cost to the town when it comes to accepting credit cards.
Okay. So we do accept credit cards at the town office for tax payments and things?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
And the fee that goes to it is billed in addition to? Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Anyone want to make any motions? And what do you want to...
Town manager's recommendation.
Town manager's recommendation is $7,200.
$7,200.
Second?
Any more discussion? Okay, ready to vote? All those in favor of the motion? All those opposed? Motion passes, thank you.
All right. So our next area is professional services, and this contains all the costs for our legal services, as well as any sort of engineering or other outside consultant that we would get to come in to do a project for us. It's typically, you know, stuff that happens throughout the year that is... It can be kind of ad hoc. Some of it, we've tried to plan for it and have a sense of what we're going to do this year. And really, the major change from last year is that we had budgeted some money to do a project on the public landing. That project hasn't been done yet. We were lucky enough to get accepted as part of a state study to look at sea level rise within a bunch of different coastal communities and how that infrastructure is going to be impacted. So, you know, a lot of the money that we were going to spend last year on that study, the state is going to do it for us, so that's great for us. But anyway, the expense associated with that study, of course, we didn't budget for it this year because we're not going to be doing it. So it's back to more of the level that we've seen in previous years. I didn't budget for ZBA legal or other legal, because those are lines that we just hadn't been using. And just for accounting reasons, we wanted to simplify the way that we showed our legal expenses. For engineering and professional services, it's about the same level that we've had in the past. There are a few projects that we were hoping to do this year. It had more to do with a few of the parks that need... We need a little bit of engineering work done on to fix some erosion problems, some things like that. So really, it's just kind of similar to how it's been over the past few years.
So with the town landing, did that money not get spent in 2019?
Correct.
And where does that money end up that did not get spent?
So it's TIP funds. So at this point, it will just stay in that... The TIP account. You know, depending on what we get back from the state, we might have to do some more work to get to a point where we have, you know, plans that we can use to move forward with some sort of work on the public landing. So we still might need to use it, but it's certainly some back... Something I'd come back to the Budget Committee and talk about before we did it.
On the legal fund, is this the line that the fee for the attorney's fees, when they come to selectmen's meetings and things of that nature, or is that a separate spot?
Nope, that's all here in general legal.
All right, thank you.
Yep.
Does the ZBA legal, does that just get put into when they need... The 10 zoning board of appeals, does that get put in the planning's budget, or...
We'll just probably charge it to general legal, because a lot of the time, you know, a lot of the time what he does, it's chopping it up is just not very useful to us.
Any other questions, comments?
Yeah. Yeah. If you look that line generally legal over, like if you go to the actual fiscal year '17, you budgeted $19,000. $19,000 was budgeted. You didn't necessarily do it. And then you ran into some problems, or you... Somebody ran into some problems. I don't know if that was a snowball or what, okay? But certainly, you had to add to that. So where did that money come from? And let me just go a little further. The actuals for '18 were about, what, $14,000 more than was budgeted. And this year, you budgeted 16, and then you're going to go to 20... 19 was budgeted $16,000. What's the status now of that?
So, I mean, the whole budget for this year is quite a bit under because of what we just talked about, you know? But if you look at how we're tracking in terms of legal fees, we're about at what, you know, about where you'd expect us to be at this point in the year. But I believe in the past, and... Or I can tell you what I would do. If I knew that I was kind of, you know, we were up against a situation where we are using more legal resources than we have budgeted, I'd go to the select board and say, hey, it looks like we're, you know, going to run over budget when it comes to legal fees for these reasons. And I would recommend that they spent out of their contingency, if there were contingency available, to cover that overage. Or depending on how we were tracking across our general government cost centers, and I would speak to the finance director to find out how we were doing, we might be at a point where we could absorb that overage without impacting the overall budget. So it really depends on where, you know, what we spend in the year, where we're tracking with everybody, with everything else, and where we're going. But this year, it seems to be that, you know, I mean, there's always like a few things that are a little bit under, a few things that are a little bit over, but in general, most of the areas in the budget are right where you'd expect them to be at this point in time.
The years where we've had high legal fee budgets, have those been planning board-related controversies?
I'm sorry, I don't have the history to be able to...
We had a couple of years where there were lots and lots of meetings about a development out on Baby Street, I think, and that probably was the, you know, '16, '17 budget.
I guess if I was going to make a comment, it looks to me like you've underbudgeted... Not you, but it has been an underbudgeted line that you've had to deal with.
I think it's hard to see these things coming, because somebody files an application, and a couple months later, they have a hearing. If they don't like the result, then they appeal or fight, or some of these things seem to have multiple hearings. And once you get into that controversy stage, I assume they'd like to bring the attorney in to keep track of what's going on in real time?
Yeah, I mean, it's a hard thing. You never know what's coming. I mean, we try to be proactive in how we use our attorneys, so that we're getting... We're communicating with them to try to head off issues before they happen, but you can't always predict them.
I think when we get to planning, Steve, we should... We can check with the planning department to see if they're aware of any pending developments that might create the need for additional legal attention as hearings go on and that type of thing. Any comments? Questions? Motion?
I'll move $54,000 on the professional services budget line.
Second.
Okay. Any more discussion? We've got a motion to approve $54,000 on the professional services budget. All those in favor? Opposed? Thank you.
All right. So the next budget is for planning, code enforcement, community development, and assessing. So really, the most significant changes in this budget from the past year, or the current financial year we're in to what's proposed, comes down to wages and benefits. A lot of that has to do with staff that was hired either last financial year or this financial year. Another thing to point out in this budget, we were having sort of a difficult time separating some of the assessing versus planning, development codes, costs, and keeping track of all that. So we thought a better way to do it would be to split out some of the assessing costs, like their supplies, their mileage, professional development, organizational dues, all of those sorts of elements. So that's new this year, but I think it'll help us track the different areas in the department much better. Also contained in this budget are some of the smaller budgets for some of our committees. So we've got, you know, zoning board, historic resources, planning board, and the conservation commission are all contained in here. A mistake that I made, we were working on a records preservation project this financial year, and we want to continue working on that project into this year. So I would recommend continuing to fund that at the same level it has that I didn't fund it, which was a mistake on my part. So those are really, you know, the big areas when it comes to this budget. And we have department heads here as well, if you have any questions about that department.
So are you suggesting that you would like us to amend this budget? So at line 103-1208, we add $5,000?
Yes, please.
Is my math right? That would bring us up to $463,699?
Yes.
What is that, Audra, is records preservation?
So we've got a lot of just physical copies of old, you know, records. It's meetings from, you know, old select board meetings, town meetings.
Scanning.
Yeah.
All that stuff.
Yeah. So just decades and decades of...
Interesting stuff that we've never even put any... Nobody can access it unless you go in the town vault, so...
Are you scanning them and putting them into PDFs?
Yes.
Are they searchable?
They are, in fact, searchable.
I mean, and it's astounding that the software's much better than Adobe. You can actually, if you want to afterward, you can see our scanning setup in the hallway, but yeah, it makes it searchable. So you could search for the word, you know, Bach, you know, and see all the different things that the Bach family donated. Right now, we have 1925 to 1935, all the select board minutes are searchable. Those are online.
How many more do you have to go?
I mean, it's a very long time.
Right. So does that line keep going for the next 10 years, or what are you thinking?
I mean, I think that...
No, no.
Yeah, I think it's a pretty discreet project. We're looking at hiring an intern for the summer to get help with the scanning. Really, the scanning equipment hasn't been that expensive, and I think once the town is done with our project, we'll be able to work with like the library or the Camden Rockport Historical Society, so they can start digitizing some of their records as well. And that's not something that would be an ongoing cost to us, because we've already got the equipment and we've already done our project, but the benefit will be much broader.
Yes, sir.
Planning board, zoning board secretary. We didn't have a secretary last year?
We did. I believe that that cost was just rolled into... I forget how it was done. Was it... It wasn't done through a stipend. I think it was just done through... Was it put in the wages line?
It was part of... I think it was part of her wages.
Yeah. So we're just separating it out as a stipend this year.
I mean, there's a big difference between FY '18, actuals of $32,000, and only $5,000 this year.
Yeah.
That was her part... That was when she was actually part-time. We separated that out, and that's... That was the line item that the...
So it's full-time now?
So she is 30 hours a week now. So is she in the wages line now?
She's in the full-time wages.
And that qualifies her for health insurance?
Yes.
Because you're... Okay. Because that's obviously a big jump from '18 to '19, from $17,000 to $65,000. Other...
So a lot of that in FY '19 didn't have to do with that one employee? There were, you know, Jeremy came on, and he's, you know...
He gets health insurance?
Gets health insurance.
And then Steve came on too, and he had different health insurance than Bill.
So Steve Wilson is back as CEO?
Correct. I brought him back after taking the bang war.
They're following each other around.
Any other questions, comments?
I have a question about the marketing line, the PNC marketing line. It's understandable that it was underspent last year because of the transition, but is... Are there plans to spend that money this year?
Yes. So the money that wasn't spent last year, as well as the budget for this year, it's actually what we're going to use to pay for the new website.
Anyone else? Mark?
Make a motion that we approve the manager's request of the... Would the amended amount of $5,000 added in, and whatever the math adds that up to?
I have $463,699. Any other discussion?
Question? What is the planning board doing with $3,000?
Planning boards really should be go through an annual MMA training annually, and there's... It's about a $600 to have five of them go. It's about a $600 price tag. There's an annual training that MMA puts on, and then there's additional support when we may need, say, engineering expertise. We would have to look into that to support the planning board as well. into that to support the planning board as well. There, there was a question about the lawyer, attorney fees that was asked, I'm trying to limit those as much as possible, I haven't, I don't envision anything legal-wise moving forward this year. What was that? And advertising fees, yeah.
Each time you have a meeting, you advertise?
Like a public hearing.
Oh, yes.
In the local paper, right?
Yes.
That comes under that, advertising comes under the planning board?
Yeah, for public hearings.
For public hearings.
For their particular needs.
Yes.
Yes. And I will say, we've got a lot of public, we've had a lot of public hearings this year, and we're going to move forward, there's going to be a lot more, because there's more ordinance changes that are in the works for this coming year as well. There's a, a lot of ordinances moving forward.
Okay.
Any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion? Opposed? Thank you.
All right, so on to the IT budget, so like we were talking about before, we're kind of at this in-between point where we're trying to transition away as much as we can from physical servers, and we made the first step in that process by converting to Office three sixty-five, and, you know, all of our email, it's no longer on a physical server, it's cloud-based. So through that, we're, you know, we're seeing a reduction in sort of maintenance fees, because, you know, you don't have somebody coming in every time there's a problem with the email to work on the server. You know, most of the issues we have are, you know, it'd be Microsoft-related, so you call up Microsoft and get support. But we're kind of in that in-between point as well, there's a lot of capabilities with software like that, and there, there is cost to it, which is, you know, why the licensing line has gone up. But I think as everybody becomes more familiar with the way that the software works, we're going to, you know, we're going to start to be able to bring a lot of those servers offline, so some of the servers we have now that are data servers, we'll be able to get rid of them. But we're sort of at the point now where everybody's still learning how to use it, and, you know, the servers aren't at the end of their physical, or their usable life, so, you know, I think everybody will become more familiar with how to use it, the servers will be, you know, go offline, and will, you know, basically be...
So is the idea that the maintenance line, that one oh four, three thousand and eight, will reduce over time, is that the line that we hope to trim down?
That's what we're hoping, yeah, and also, you know, we do have some programs we run like Trio and Vision, and I, and those aren't cloud-based at this point, so, you know, hopefully, we'll get to a point where they are as well, so there's less need to have as much IT support as we do now.
By the way, Carrie Lightman, our assessor's here, thanks for coming, and thank you, and thank you, Jeremy, also, for hosting us when we went around and met earlier. I had a question, my self-serving question here, I think we talked about the tax maps at one point, that they were a little out of date, is there something in here that's going to give you the ability to, to at least update them? Is that what the GIS stuff is?
Exactly. We're in progress, probably like within two weeks' time, it'll probably be accomplished.
Okay, great. Don't you agree?
Oh, and if you've looked at our assessing database lately, you'll see that the full property card is available online now, too.
Good, yeah, that's, that's nice to know. A lot of towns have that, and it's a very handy tool for people who want to know, or those in the real estate business. Any questions, comments? Kip, you got any follow-up to some of your earlier IT questions? Motion?
I guess I got one more question, so how often do you guys replace your computers?
So we've got, you know, we've got a, a schedule of when everybody's system kind of comes offline, but, you know, we don't strictly adhere to that, because if somebody's machine is still running pretty well, then, you know, they'll, they'll go with it a little bit longer. You know, and since all of our data is backed up on the cloud or on, you know, a different server, it's not, it's not like a...
Do you budget though for a certain amount of computers per year?
Yeah, so in the hardware line, that nine thousand, yeah, and we were able to replace quite a few last year, so we're not thinking that we need to do as many this year, everybody's in pretty good shape. Oh, I just got a note, so if, I guess that some viewers at home are having a hard time hearing some of us that are far, farther away from the microphones, so if everybody could make an effort to talk towards them or into them a little bit more, that would be helpful.
Okay.
Which is basically impossible.
Okay, does any, Mark?
Like to make a motion, we approve the eighty thousand four hundred as requested.
Okay, we have a motion made seconded to approve the town managers and department head requests of eighty thousand four hundred dollars for the information technology account. Any more discussion? Ready to vote? All those in favor? Opposed? Thank you, motion passes.
All right, so the next area is our insurances, so I, I remember we had the discussion last year, we changed insurance providers, we were going with Maine Municipal Association for all of our sort of general town insurance, and we were able to save quite a bit of money by switching providers. The, the kind of difference in that that we learned this year is that they don't bill separately per each, they don't bill for like, you know, general liability, auto, property, all of these items separately, it's just kind of, you know, one bill that we get for property and casualty that covers all of these areas, so that's why we've chunked them together under general liability, under sixty-seven thousand, and there is a little bit of a premium increase this year in that area, as well as a little bit in the workers' comp insurance as well. But it's, you know, everything is still looking pretty good in terms of, you know, workers' comp is the one that we really watch very closely, because, you know, if we're not, if we don't have a good program in place, it's really easy for that to get quite out of control. So that's something that everybody's paying very, very close attention to, we have a really great safety committee, they're very proactive, everybody is very aware of our history and the need to be incredibly diligent about, you know, safety across the organization, so, you know, that's something that we're going to keep paying attention to, we're hoping that this year will be our first dividend payment, because that's another feature of MEMIC, which is, who are, covers us for workers' comp insurance, they pay out dividend checks if you're performing well, and they're very happy with how we've been doing, if you compare where we were, you know, three, four years ago to where we are now.
How is that dividend reflected, or if that dividend comes in, what happens?
Where does it go?
Does it show as a revenue item, the, the MEMIC dividend? Yes.
Yeah, so it would come in as revenue and, yeah.
How have they been with claims, and have we had any claims?
Oh, we've had, you know, we've had a few, but it's not anywhere near the level where we were a little while ago.
I'm sorry, so the insurance dividend of April, or eighteen, was three thousand two hundred and forty-eight, is that, am I reading that correctly?
Let me just...
Page two of your revenues.
In that line, and that's what it was.
Line ninety...
It may have also been, and I can pull up the, the detail, it might have been any claims on other types of, of property casual, uh, property insurance or whatnot, it may have gone into there as well, so.
I'm sorry, you were saying?
Is there any other questions?
The only comment I have on the, on the insurance, break, breakout here, is that in the future, when you do do your lock 'em out, it is kind of handy to understand what are all the different things you're insuring, so in your, perhaps your comments underneath, it would be useful just to list what they are, so that we know that when we are in fact covering these types of things, because once you do it in a bunch, you just call it insurance, it kind of hides from us what all the components are, but certainly in the dialogue boxes, if you kept that up, I think that would be good.
Absolutely, and there are some, you know, there's some areas that we can change, like we're, by our charter, for, this is just an interesting fact, but our charter requires us to bond all employees, but the way that our insurance policy works, it covers a lot of the things that we're bonding, so we really don't need, we don't need to bond them, but because we're required to by charter, we do anyway, so, you know, there are just a few little, and it, it adds up across the organization, all the people that we need to bond, so, you know, that's in the future, it's a discussion for the charter commission, but that's like an administrative area that can be changed, that would save us a little bit of money.
Any more discussion? Kip?
Sort of one, I mean, A, I think you guys should be recognized for what you did to that work that's going on, I mean, that's a hundred thousand dollars in, what, four years.
Yeah.
Out of curiosity, is there, is there a chance for that to even further decrease with the efforts you guys are putting in place?
Yeah, absolutely, I mean, it's all, you know, it's all based on your experience, so, you know, the better the safety committee does in reducing incidences, the better it's going to get, and I think that, you know, we've got some really proactive people, one of our, one of our biggest risks as a town, of course, is the snowball, and it's, you know, we've got people who come on, they're sort of casual seasonal staff, and, you know, they have to come in and be trained up in a really short amount of time, and I just think that they've done a lot at the snowball to get people who are there kind of on a casual, part-time basis to be very conscious of, you know, safety in general, and what they need to do to protect themselves and keep themselves healthy. So, you know, a lot of, you know, a lot of good work done by the safety committee, working with other departments, you know, particularly our high-risk departments, to identify that sort of stuff, and, you know, make everybody mindful of it, really, I mean, it's just building a culture, and it took us a little bit of time, and I think we, you know, we're getting there, there's always ways that we can improve, but we're much better than where we used to be. And that's a lot, it's just the employees paying attention, being diligent, and really making it a part of what they do, so all credit to the employees of the town for that.
Any more questions, comments, motions?
I like the motion, we approve the amount requested by the town manager.
And anyone else for discussion? So we have a motion to approve the town manager request of two hundred and twenty thousand seven hundred dollars for insurances. All those in favor? Opposed? Thank you, motion passes.
All right, so we're on to the Opera House Town Office building, so I asked Dave Morrison, who's the director of the Opera House, to come up and talk about this budget, as well as the Opera House Auditorium, which is the next budget area.
Good evening, everybody. O one oh six is, is, the building is kind of covered by two budget lines, and in simple terms, I think of O one oh six as sort of the town office, separate from the Opera House and theater space. So a lot of it is just utilities, the cost being shared fifty-fifty, whether it's, you know, heat and air conditioning and fire alarm, sprinkler system, and so on. So the budget that you see, there's really no change, the only change is we slightly reduced three oh one four, which was the contracted cleaning cost, mainly because we haven't needed it so much, partly the complement goes to our current custodian is very good, so other than that, the number is pretty flat.
And we will get to, when we talk about capital improvements, we will talk about some major repairs that need to be done on this building, but that's for another...
Another day.
So the, the health insurance line is down a half? Yeah, that's, that's a result of high, when we, when we, when we planned to hire, we did hire a new custodian this past year, and so we, we have to budget for the most expensive family, and whether they choose the family, if they go with a single, that, that's reflective in the...
So this is sort of reflecting actual versus...
Yes.
Anticipating.
Yep.
Yes, Mark?
Yes, you say that you're flat-lined, but you're actually down seven point four percent, and a question for the, the nineteen budget, how are you managing at this point in time?
I think we are slightly under. Does that sound right, Jody?
I'm going to dig out my report, and I'm going to tell you.
Okay.
Here we are, this would be as of February twenty-eighth.
Oh, you're looking, I'm just going to say something. Full disclosure, I, I tend to sort of plug in the utility numbers, and I don't deal with wages and benefits quite so much, so, so I'm not a good person to answer if the change is there, whereas Audra or Jody could.
I mean, what I'm hearing is that they had an employee who took a lower-cost health insurance, which probably the actuals will show us that we're going to be a lot closer to ten thousand two hundred at the end of this fiscal year, and so that's why they prompted the budget lower for the next year, but going into the year, they didn't know what the insurance request is going to be, does that sound...
That's correct, yep, and at this point, as of the end of February, we should be about sixty-six percent through our year, and the Opera House, I'm sorry, the, the town office is about fifty-five percent through their budget, so.
Thank you.
I have a question on revenues, can I ask you about that, or is that, so if, if Opera House revenues were, are budgeted to fifty thousand this year, and last year, is that the revenues from shows, is that the whole thing, or is that...
The revenue from rentals.
Rentals, okay, and that's not for putting on concerts or other shows, or, so where does, where does the revenue from that show up?
So we have these special little things called restricted accounts, and for things like the Opera House shows, the idea is, and I don't have, know how this originally started, and this took Jody and myself...
I was sweating tears.
...a long time to kind of, and just when we think we, when we figured it all out, something else happens. So the idea is that with these restricted accounts, they should generally pay for themselves, so they, they should all, you know, either balance out at zero, so the cost of putting on a show sort of covers itself, or you make a little bit of money. And so over the years, we've sort of made enough money from, you know, these shows cumulatively to keep, you know, putting on the ones, like, they're kind of like seed funding, to continue putting other shows on, but it all kind of sits outside of the operating budget that you see, but we all recognize that that isn't the optimal way to do it, so we want to rethink how we present the Opera House budget.
So when we get to revenues, can we have a fuller discussion on that?
Yes.
Okay, I, I didn't mean to sidetrack, I just...
No, it's a good question.
It seemed like I couldn't figure out, where did all the Mallett Brothers money go?
Right, right, no, it's a great question, and I definitely want to talk about it with the budget committee, because we'd like to do the Opera House Auditorium budget differently in the future, we'd like to make it, you know, it would still be for the budget committee to approve, but it would look a little bit more like how we do the wastewater or snowball budget.
Right.
So you'd get to see those different sources of revenue coming in.
Right, some of the revenue from the shows hopefully goes to accounts that help for repair, maintenance, and, you know, some reserves for that, because certainly there's wear and tear when you do those, so.
Yeah, and we get sponsorships and donations, so.
Yes, sir.
The general information question, when we have certain events in the Opera House that require security, who pays for that?
Usually it's police department.
Yep, and if it's a, if it's a rental event that requires security, it gets charged to the renter, and if it's an Opera House production, it becomes part of the budget for that production.
Good.
So for example, I can give you an example, Camden Conference, very often, if it is a bit of a provocative subject, and they will err on the side of caution and have an officer laying close here, happily, it's never really been needed, but that, in their case, they contract directly with the police department.
And that shows up as the special detail line in the police budget, and then the police revenue that you'd see in the... police revenue, that you'd see in the revenue area.
Okay.
Learned a lot of interesting things here, Joe.
Oh, yeah.
Any other questions? Yes, Ken?
Seriously, can you talk about the solar electricity delivery fee? I'm just curious.
Say, I cannot, but someone here can.
So, I think that's all part of the power purchase agreement.
It, it's actually the delivery fee for us to, to utilize the solar power. CMP charges us to, to receive the solar power. It's about fifteen, fifteen to twenty dollars a month. That, I, I'm not even sure when the solar panels went in, was it prior to my arrival?
No, no, it was, well, I mean, close.
Okay.
So, it was, when did we vote on that? Then everyone voted on it September twenty seventeen.
Okay, so just, okay, so that was never an appropriation, or maybe not even considered at that point. So, based on the expenses that we incurred in FY eighteen, and then it became apparent that it was going to be a fifteen dollar a month. So, around fifteen dollars a month.
So, are we, it's not apparent here, but are we seeing offsets in electricity costs because of the solar farm yet? I mean, it doesn't look like it when I'm looking at the electricity line.
Um, I can speak a little bit to that, from my small experience being in the Lincolnville Town Office. It's, it's a matter of actually changing the supply and how, what type of electricity we're receiving. So, the rates are, are kind of gonna be the same to what CMP's been charging us, but it's from a different resource. But I, and somebody correct me if I'm wrong, because, okay.
Basically, it's a plant water in which we power, which we draw some water off of, and the solar system is providing some water into that pump.
It's a push, is what you're saying.
We're paying for it, which is a net asset, a kilowatt, which is just a care of us.
It's a push.
But what will happen when we pay off the solar farm, then we will no longer have that cost, and power will be free at that point.
And that's what, twenty years?
It depends when we made a deal to close out, the deal with the PPA with provision energy. Could be seven years, or something like seven years, eleven years. That's still to be decided.
Lifespan is about twenty years on those panels, so we'll get about a fifty percent benefit, really?
Actually, probably up to forty years.
Okay.
Forty.
Any other questions?
Nobody knows.
Motion?
I made the motion that we accept the Department, the town manager's recommendation.
Solar panels will be like the pain, lifespan, it goes a hundred and seven.
Second? Yeah. Okay, we have the motion made and seconded to accept the town manager request for Opera House slash Town Office Building of ninety-two thousand, eight hundred dollars. Any more discussion? Please vote. All those in favor? All opposed? Motion passes.
All right, so the next area that we'll be looking at is the Opera House Auditorium. So, this is really the performing arts venue of the Opera House as opposed to the building itself?
Yes, so, again, a lot of the utilities are shared with the previous account, HVAC and sprinkler security, so forth. Again, this number, there's not a lot of change. A couple of lines have gone down slightly, just to try and reflect kind of real usage. The marketing line has gone up a little bit, and that's for two reasons. One, to reflect real usage, and two, we're just being a little bit more aggressive about using our marketing and advertising now, and it's, I think it's really effective to help raise our, our profile in the area and bring more people to shows, and therefore help with our income. So, that has gone up slightly. And the third change is a slight increase in part-time wages. We would like to try to increase with special projects and some of our marketing and online things. A person who currently works for us, Karina Shorten, who's amazing, is leaving because she's about to have a baby. However, she has an enormous amount of institutional memory, and a lot of what she does can be done remotely. So, by adding a few part-time hours, that would allow us to just get more work done in what we hope is a frugal way, because it doesn't require some of the additional costs from, from hiring an extra person. So, that position would be filled, and then she would be available to us for special projects and support when we need it, and so forth.
Can, can you, I don't know if this is you or Audra, but we've, we've got an increase in full-time wages, but yet we've got a pretty big drop in health insurance?
So, a lot of that, I think, comes down to the staffing change that Dave was just talking about. So, Karina's leaving, and she was thirty, was she thirty hours old?
Twenty-five.
Oh, so she wasn't. So, oh, that's, that's the custodian as well, because that position is split between the town office as well as the auditorium. That's, that's the difference, isn't it?
I think so.
Yeah.
Does the change in my position, is that reflected anyway?
That's, that's a little bit of a...
The wages.
Yes.
Yep, and the insurance decrease again is because what was appropriated versus what was selected by those employees. In this case, they, it looks to be they're choosing a single.
Just, to make sure we're all clear, this, we may have gone over this before, but what we just talked about previously was about this building, and now what I'm looking at is actually the operation of the auditorium, and personnel and other expenses are allocated to each one. So, altogether, it comprised the whole operation of the building, auditorium, but it's been allocated out, just, maybe everybody already gets that. Good? Questions? Yes?
Why the reduction in cleaning cost?
We haven't need to use it so much, happily. There was a time when we would hire out to do carpet cleaning, or window washing, or some of these other things, and we've been able to just take them in and have them done in-house more. So, in years past, we, we haven't had to really max that line out, reduced it a little bit.
Mark?
No, we just discussed it, but your electricity line, your budget is down ten thousand, down two thousand dollars from what it was in eighteen. And is the combined effort between the two sections gone down, or?
I think our, our actuals have just been a little bit lower than what was budgeted in the past, and...
Right.
So, we just looked at reducing that to be more in line with the actuals.
They've been marketing to tell us to wear our jackets, keeping the heat down.
Branded fleeces.
Shows that, in the dark.
Yeah, your overtime position, you were at actual, in fiscal year eighteen, at eleven thousand, and you're only budgeting two thousand? Is that an anomaly in eighteen?
Do you want me to speak to that, or would you like to?
Sure, I can add anything.
Okay. Oh, I think, and you can tell me if this is true, that had to do with a staffing change. When the prior manager left, and I was offered the job and took over, there was this period of limbo where, for one reason or another, there's a lot of overtime. Part of it was, we weren't able to fill certain positions while it was in transition, and then there was also a bit of a lag while the, the manager position was kind of redefined, which affected its job classification, which affected the money. So, that transition contributed a lot of overtime, and now that that transition is complete, the need is way down.
Right, and part of it was, at the time, Dave in particular was not a salaried employee, he was an hourly employee, and then there was some other, you know, staff transition, you know, elements that had to do with that. But Dave's now a salaried employee.
Okay.
Yeah, so we have a little bit more certainty around hours and overtime.
Okay, thank you.
Any more questions, comments, motions?
I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion that we accept the town manager's recommended budget for the Opera House, a twenty to two hundred and ninety-nine hundred dollars.
Second.
Any more discussion? Please vote. All those in favor? Opposed? Thank you. Motion passes. Are we all done?
Thank you very much.
It's too bad Randy's not here.
What's the handout?
Going. I said, it's too bad Randy's not here, we could just keep going.
Yeah, so what's the handout?
So, one of the select board members, and I think this was a good catch, they pointed out that it was kind of difficult for everyone to see what the bottom line was on the budget. It's in there, but I think it's in the very back, and it's kind of buried, so it's difficult to see. So, we thought that we would kind of show the overall expenses, overall revenues, and the net position of the town. So, that's what this addition is.
So, then, as we look at this, then what we are potentially facing is a three point two-two percent increase in total budget over last year?
Yes. So, we just wanted that to be very clear.
And the question is, where does it go in the notebook?
I swear, sure.
Give us that.
I have a tab two up front.
The other night at the select board meeting, you mentioned the budget a little bit, and talking about the mill rate? And with the six point three-five percent increase, if that holds true, approximately, what will that do to our mill rate?
So, it's six point, what was it, six point...
Three-five.
...and expenses, but we're proposing some revenue to offset that, some different revenues to offset that, so it'd be about three point two percent. And I think that I calculated if all, so theoretically, if we didn't grow in value at all this year, and we just stayed flat, which I don't think is very likely, I think we are gonna pick up some value, we'd be looking at maybe eighteen, seventeen, eighteen cents.
Per?
Per thousand.
Per valuation.
Yeah. Oh, I'm, I'm just talking about here.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And the current mill rate for this past year was fourteen...
Eighty-eight.
Eighty-eight.
So, that would potentially have an impact by itself of putting us slightly over fifteen?
It could.
But if it goes up eighteen cents, you're talking fifteen something, fifteen oh six?
Fifteen oh six, right.
Flex, I could come up with any number.
Good, good discussion, though, I mean, that's really what we're here for, sort of the bottom line and the impact on the mill rate, and, you know, these are all the key numbers that we're going to ultimately make, making the decision on. One of the things that we didn't do in the intro meeting, that I think we did last time, but this bottom line increase number is sort of, are we okay with it as a group? Is it way out of bounds, too high, or something like that? I think that was, in the past, sometimes we would get to the end of the budget process and see that the increase was a lot greater than what we had thought about. So, I should have brought this up at the first meeting, but thank you for doing that now, because that's a really key thing for us to focus on when we get to the end of the show. If we've been sticking pretty much to as we've been going so far, this will be the increase that we're proposing. Next week, we have police, fire, we've got emergency medical services, is that the ambulance?
Yes.
Is that going to be a lengthy discussion?
Not this year, but I mean, I do, I would like to speak to the Budget Committee about just generally levels of service and thoughts on it. It's not gonna impact the budget this year, but it would be good to get everybody's input about future years and what we might want to do, because I think the more that people talk about it across town, the better understanding we're gonna have of what everybody wants and what everybody thinks about what we're currently doing.
Okay, so I think, given that we have three significant departments plus that discussion, it'll probably be a little bit longer meeting. I believe it's only twenty-eight. Yes, Mark?
I know that we may not have any say on this, but is there any point in our discussions where we discuss the county budget at all?
Well, typically, no.
I don't see it listed here.
Typically, no, but, you know, we could ask Randy Sterns, who's the Camden representative to the Knox County Budget Committee, to come in and chat with the group.
Would like to, at least here.
Yeah.
Yeah, that might be a good add-on for the twenty-eight.
I'd be happy to get in touch with Randy, and he's been doing it for a long time, so I'm sure he'd be...
Is that approximate percentage of our total dollar that goes towards the, the county?
I don't know off the top of my head.
It's on, it's on the, it's almost on the tax bill.
Maybe it was like six percent.
Okay, and there's so, so much for the school, so much for municipality, and so much for county, those are the three breakdowns.
Yes, yeah. So, I know school's about sixty-one, we're thirty-two, and they're, whatever the difference is, together.
Sixty-one, thirty-two.
Right, write them too.
Yeah, seven.
Okay, motion to adjourn? No, I'm adjourned. Okay, opposed? Thank you. Lovely to keep for coming.